...the prayer, so let's, let's start with that.
Our dear holy father, we gather together at the city council, we ask that thy spirit may be upon us, that we may hear and understand the things that need to be discussed for Payson City to grow and to develop and to the best city it can be. We pray for thy spirit to be here with us, and we're grateful for the moisture that we've received, and we pray for these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Would everybody please raise their hands?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of honor, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It looks like the room's gonna fall over. Everybody's on one side. It's kinda weird. We have the consent agenda next. Do we have a motion on that or a discussion? I would make the motion that we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now the next thing is a public forum. This is where anybody in the audience that could get up and make, and talk to us. I would like you to state your name and, and come up to the podium. If there's something that's already on the agenda, you can just, unless, if it's a public hearing, then please don't talk about that. But does anybody like to address the council and staff? Yeah, just come up to the microphone up here and state your name and...
I guess I'm in an order. Is this, is that okay? All right, well, I'm coming here on behalf of the Payson Civic Corral. And I don't know if you're all familiar, or any of you are familiar with what the corral is, but we've been established since 1981, so we've been along, around for a long time. And we wanted to share... Oh, yes. I didn't state my name. I'm not sure what I said. Okay. I'm Jenny Ruth Alvey, and I am president of Payson Civic Corral. And I'm here on behalf of the corral tonight with our treasurer, Diane Robbins. We wanted to share with you some information, and you probably, some of you have already heard that we've been invited to go to New York. So I'd just like to offer a letter to all of the council and anyone else that's here, like Dave Tuckett, anybody that's not here. There's several people not here, it looks like. Anyway, this is a letter that we would like to share with you, and I'll give it to you. Dear Mayor Wright, he's not here, but the rest of you. As you are already aware, Judge Doggery has been invited by Mid-American Productions to guest conduct on the stage at Carnegie Hall in New York City as part of their 2019 concert series. The actual concert date is Memorial Day, May 27th, 2019. The members of the Payson Civic Corral are excited. They were excited at this honor when we got this information that has come to him, and by extension to the Civic Corral and the city of Payson as well. We have all rallied around him and committed to the cause. We're all going to try very, very hard to plan ahead. We've known this now for a few months, I think since fall or winter, and are committing to go. They are requiring, or asking quite, quite forcefully, I guess, that we have 125 boys choir that will be performing on Memorial Day. And right now, we have 70, and I don't know that we're going to make it to 125, but we are able to ask any, any other around the area. It has been a tradition for the past 37 years, since the corral was organized in 1981, whenever the corral has traveled on the road to invite family and friends to accompany us. We have been fortunate to have both Mayor Gary DeSiner, some of you may not even remember Gary DeSiner, I do, and his wife join us in the 1984 performance at the New Orleans World's Fair. That was our first time ever flying anywhere. Well, not all of us, but most of us. And then we went to Mayor Bills, Bertus Bills, and his wife accompanied us at Carnegie Hall in 2006. And I don't know, there was somebody else that went with us at one time.
I can learn to understand you much better than I can get familiar with the way you talk.
Wow. They're really blunt, aren't they? Okay. Anyway, we wish that we had the funds to pay for your way. We don't, but we want to invite you. We have a letter here for each one of the city council and the mayor, and the information, so that you can go along with us. It was wonderful. It was wonderful when Bertus was there. I believe he was the last one to go with us. And as you know, we've traveled, we just got back from Dublin, Ireland this summer. And I don't believe we had any mayor go with us. I fell, and I wasn't all with it the rest of the time, but we didn't have any one of you represented. But I think this is quite an honor, to think that our own corral here in Payson City has someone that is, has the talents, the abilities. And I mean, I could go on and on with the ability that he has and why he was asked. It was very unsolicited. He was as shocked as anybody when he got this letter that said, "We'd like you to be guest conductor at Carnegie Hall." And so, we would be privileged to have any of you come, any of your family that wanted to. Even though we can't pay your way, we would like you to come. And any non-singers are welcome to come and participate with us. And we are also excited to return to New York. There's 12, 12 years ago, there was probably half of what the corral consists of now. And when the corral was organized in 1981, there were probably 12 of us that are left when we started in 1981, that are still singing in the corral. And we feel like it's an honor. We also want you to know tonight that, that we're not soliciting money, but we would like to ask that the park tax, that if you have any information about that, and whose might be someone we could turn to?
I think the application's online, isn't it?
Is that you? Okay. I know him and his, and all that information. Okay, is online. Okay. That's marvelous. We would like to, to be able to do whatever it is to be one of those individuals that might, might be able to protect us on that funds, if there is any. So we just want to say thank you for allowing us to come, to invite you. And anyone else that would like to go, you can spread the word. We had many, many people last time that came. I mean, we had two plane, two, two planes. So we had a lot of guests, not just our corral. So we would like to invite any of you, and I'd like to give you these tonight. And if, is the mayor going to, can I meet this?
Yeah, yeah, he'll be back.
He'll be back? He was here. Did I not see him or?
He was here.
He was here.
Yeah, he'll be back.
Just so you know, if you need to recruit a couple singers, there's Jeff Cooper there that sings, and there's Dave Tuckett, so...
Oh, I know Dave. I don't know why he hasn't been.
We kinda heard it, wouldn't we?
Yeah. We got Gary Big Bucket.
That would be amazing. You went to New York before, didn't you?
Yeah, I did.
He did. He went to New York.
It was awesome.
It was. Well, there you go. I knew you did. I can't see that far away, but when you said Cooper, I knew. Okay. And Dave hasn't been, but Dave, you have a wonderful voice. I've heard that, so we're expecting you to at least think about us. And I don't know if you know, you have, you do have to try out, however, in front of the judge.
I think we should have a city talent show to have Mr. Tuckett headline it.
Yes. Yes. Okay. I don't think Chris Johnson has it. Really? I think I know you. Okay, well... How about you, Paul, with this?
Nope, but he has. That's my dad.
He's the one. Thank you. Thank you. See?
Hospital loves an eye.
I know, Sister. Sister, please. Counselwoman, go ahead, girl. And you would. And I'll leave this for, I don't know, and the air. Okay, great. Thank you. I appreciate your time, and I hope that you will tell your friends and everybody that's here. I mean, really, we would love to have any of you come. And if you do have voices, he's taking auditions this fall, and you can. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Anybody else for a public forum? Okay, we'll turn to the staff reports. What was that? Oh, it was on the agenda. Oh, sorry. Well, we can skip that now.
We'll take care of that.
Take care of that one, okay. Staff reports.
Mayor Protan and council, just a quick update on the water, since we actually got some snow finally, but we unfortunately got half the amount of snow up there that we did down here. But we're at 57% on precipitation for the year, 55 on snow water equivalent, and we have 32 inches according to the snow tells. So it's better, but it's still about half of what normal is, so we'll see what goes on. And we have, with Highline, we did request to rent as much water as they would allow us to. It was only 4% of our allocation, so it's really, I don't know, talking with Brent, we may get an extra week out of it. It's about all, so that's all we can do. So we've done that, and we'll have to just see how much we can get out of lakes that we can use, but we'll, we'll do our best to manage that this year.
Mayor Protan and council, just to make you aware, that as we work every year with Utah Local Government Trust, we have our safety committee where we work to identify areas where we can work to increase our safety, claims, and reduce as best we can with our employees. This year with all of our departments we work with, trying to reduce claims and injuries, accidents, and going through the program, part of that requirement is our safety committee meetings, the return of work program, and different things like that. Anyway, with our tap grant this year, we were able to get $9,157.50 for that. So just wanna make you aware of that. We typically put that money into the budget and provide safety glasses and gloves and different things, vests, and things for the employees as they work out in the field, so thanks.
Mayor Protan and council, I'm gonna give you some stats tonight, but I printed off all zeros, so I apologize.
That means we had no crime?
I assure you we've done something this month. I just don't have proof right here. No, a few things going on. We have a noble graduation night. Maybe that's where the mayor took off to. I gotta go speak there in just a minute, so... I think the only thing, the other, other thing we have is our, if I told you, our canine is graduating from school at the end of the month, so we'll have him back out on the street here pretty soon. Hopefully, we find him lots of drugs. I just wanna take a few minutes and introduce Mike Smith. He's the chief of Pleasant Grove Police Department, sitting there by me. He's a candidate for the Utah County Sheriff election coming up here later this year. I've spoken with Mike on many occasions. I've worked with him on many committees. He's a, he's a great guy. And I've, along with the mayor, have given him endorsement on behalf of our police department in our city. So he'll come up and introduce himself here when his turn falls in the order here, so... But anyway, great guy. He would be a fantastic leader, you know, for to represent us as Utah County Sheriff, so thank you.
Okay, Councilman Hyatt? Councilwoman Hyatt?
Yes. I have a few things I would like to discuss. The HOA, and so a lot of these projects going forward, it looks like they're HOAs. I've been talking to several people about HOAs that are not working. My belief is, is that whoever the developer is, needs to be a part of that. And when they turn it over, it needs to be to some kind of a management company, because there's HOAs off through getting sued, and the people are very unhappy. And they don't know what to do. And, and we just keep getting more and more HOAs, and I don't want to see this just compound, compound, compound. So it's something that we need to check into.
Anything else?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
This has to do with a building inspector. I realize we're closed on Friday, but I think if we are going to be a city where we want to open up to developers to come in here, we need to have available people here on Fridays that can help as developers if we need to have someone go out on the job site. This is just an instance. I know that they want to need to come out Friday to check something. Travis, I saw your...
That, actually Brent went out. I sent him out. They didn't even, they weren't even ready for an inspection. The guy out there, the superintendent, didn't even know who sent that email. So there was no inspection that we missed or anything, so...
But I did go out and talk to him on site.
You're so good. But what I wanna do is like, so like if we need somebody there Friday, so that they can pour cement maybe Friday and Saturday, because a lot of, a lot of them do pour on Friday and Saturday, so that they have those couple of days till the next week to get it dry, or at least begin to dry. It's something we need to look at into the future. Looking at all the, all the developers that are coming in to this development that we're gonna be having. They don't just work Monday through Thursday. They work Monday through Saturday, so we need to look at that.
We also only have one building inspector that's licensed, so if he takes time off, we can...
I know, I know in the past John has made stuff available on Fridays. You know, this last weekend was a holiday weekend. Maybe he was gone, but he, he usually accommodates.
So, so we need to just have someone that they can, like if nobody's here Friday, do they call you Travis, or is there someone that people can get hold of if they need to?
Yeah.
Okay.
And if that's done, then he, he does it on, on Friday, so it's...
Do you ever do it on Saturdays?
I don't know of anyone that does.
There are some that do, but they're smaller communities.
Debbie is here that deals with all the public works, and they do their own inspections. And John's usually available if, if they call him and make an appointment. So I, I think we try to accommodate whenever they need it. But we, but we can look into it.
We really need to put that out there that, you know, if they think they're gonna be ready, it's better that they're not ready, and we send somebody out, than if they are and they're sitting there waiting for us. Because, I mean, I feel bad that they weren't ready, because now they have two weeks of wetness before...
But it sounds like the guy who sent the email wasn't involved with the development, because they, they weren't aware of it.
Hey, well, I just want...
But, but yeah, we can...
I'm just putting out there, because with all this development that we're gonna start having, we wanna be the happy people that, yeah, so they were right there to services. Other than that, guys are doing great.
Councilwoman Wellen? Yeah. Not a lot. I just wanna thank the mayor and council, and Ron Crump, and everybody who's been dealing with the bill, the ESSD bill HB 256, and how it affects our community. I appreciate there's a lot of extra time, Dave as well. And I appreciate the extra time they're putting in to make sure that we get a good resolution on that. Also, I thank the snow crews. They're probably glad to get out and get in trouble. And we've had so little snow that I didn't even hear Scott being can complain about the sidewalk being covered, so... It was a good, good thing. But that's all I have. Thank you.
Councilman Christiansen?
I had a good talk with Carl about Parks and Recreation. I think there's a lot of good stuff going on there. We need to, to pay attention to the recreation that's available to us and try to utilize and move forward and get some new things rolling, and get the community excited again to get out and about. I think it's important. It's a big push nationwide. I think we need to spend more time outside. And as far as the, the police report goes, you always tell us numbers. If it's possible to maybe, if it's in a map form or something, if there's, I'd like to kinda start to see where some of this stuff's going on. I see that we have quite a few automobile accidents every month. If this is a concern, it's something we need to focus on. I'd like to see, you know, if we've got problem intersections and, and things like that that we can maybe start working towards, solving some of that problem, traffic flow. I know as we're developing our, our plans and things, we need to, to make sure we're putting vehicles where vehicles need to be, and, and if it's safer somewhere else. So if, if it's possible, I'd love to see that, even if they're dots on a map, color coding would even be better, but...
I tried to get a, a program that would map all stuff for us, but turned out it was pretty hefty as price tag, so I'll look into what we can come up with.
Right. Yeah, and I mean, I, I don't want it to, to burden the, the city as well financially, if it's something we can look at. Thanks.
I just have one thing. I just want to let you know that our Mayor Wright represented us really well. He had to testify at a House committee meeting last week. And being a new mayor and a complicated subject, he represented the city very well, so just kudos to Mayor Wright, so... That's all I have. Looks like we have no scouts here in attendance, so we've done four, so let's... Mike Smith, if you wanna come up and talk to us?
Mayor Protan and council, thank you so much for allowing me to come and take a few minutes of your time tonight. I just wanted to introduce myself, give you a little background on me. I've, this year I'll be in law enforcement for 24 years. I've, I've been in Pleasant Grove 24 years. I've spent my career there. I served as the chief of police in Pleasant Grove. I also have spent 18 years on the Utah County Metro SWAT team. I served as a team commander on that team. And also had a park kind of job with the sheriff's office as a reserve deputy. So I'm, I'm not new to the sheriff's office. I'm not new to their operations or the way things happen in the sheriff's office. I, I have a degree in emergency management administration, and I'm a graduate of the FBI National Academy. But more important than any of that, I've been married 25 years, and I have five awesome kids. And I think they've taught me more about life and more about who I am than anything you could ever gain in the work field. So I'm very grateful for that opportunity. I brought some cards with me tonight, if I could leave one with you for my, for my campaign. I don't, like I said, I don't wanna take a lot of your time. I don't know if you have any questions for me. I, I think one of the, the things that, one of my strong points is I have spent 24 years working for a municipality. And so I, I understand how a municipality works. I understand the needs that you have within Payson City, the same needs that I have within Pleasant Grove. I know what my resources are. I know when my resources are tapped. I, I bring an understanding that I know when I need help, and I know what things can be fine tuned to, to make my city work a little better from the outside. And I can bring that perspective to a countywide level and offer those resources that I know are valuable to, to the citizens of our communities. So I don't know if you have any questions for me. If not, I won't take up any more of your time.
It's real quick? Well, probably not quick. We'll see. What's the biggest need that you want to address with the Utah County Sheriff's Office?
You know, I think one of the biggest things, I, I think for me, there comes a time when, when just a, a new perspective, or even maybe a better way to put it, is a fresh set of eyes is good for an organization. Within my lifetime, I, I've never seen somebody from outside the organization be the sheriff. It's always been an internal thing. I think I can bring in a new perspective, take a look at operations, the way things are going, budgets, and just have a, a fresh perspective on the organization. And like I said, I've worked with the organization for a while. I'm not, I'm not a new face to them. I have a lot of support from within the organization to run, and that's one of the biggest reasons I'm running.
Thank you.
You want me to just leave these with your recorder, or you want me to bring them up to you?
Whatever you want.
Yeah, you can bring them.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Mike. We're gonna have a public hearing now, so with, regarding finding out of the, many of the budget for 2017, '18, so I'd like to have a motion to open public hearing. So moved? First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we'll turn the time over. Sarah, the introduce this to us.
Okay, so the first one that we have is regarding the Nibelloop self-guided audio tours. You can see in there, there's a description. They're trying to update the audio sound for people who take audio tours through the Nibelloop. And I guess there's an old mayor who narrated it, and they're trying to update that and maybe get it so it's iPhone compatible. Is that right, Jill? Bring it up. It's time.
It used to be a CD that you had to get from the T V or from the, the museum down in Nephi. And so they're actually putting, they're converting it into a GPS-based app that people can download and can take it with them along the Nibelloop. So a lot of the content will be the same, but as Sarah mentioned, it was a former mayor, several mayors ago, actually, so it's a little outdated. And so we wanna update some things to get that in place before the spring.
So how many people actually use this?
We're hoping a lot more will use the app. Actually, when we have the CDs, when we use the CDs that ended the late 1990s and into, actually, there were a lot of CDs that were picked up from the T V and from the Nibelloop to share the story of the byway when they used. So it was actually very well-received, so we're hoping with the app, it will be, it will be utilized by many more. The Forest Service is also looking at trying to identify some money to possibly even have it translated into other languages for those along the byway, so...
Does this include any money maybe for an advertisement? I mean, this is news to me.
There is some opportunity on there for advertisement of businesses or community events. You can put a community calendar on there. There's a lot of other opportunities just besides the tour.
I, I just mean like a sign as you go up the canyon that says, you know, "Download this app and follow our audio tour", so the people know, 'cause otherwise it's kinda not known, but...
We could look into that. I don't know. We'd have to look at the Forest Service regulations in Utah County.
Or even our billboard out on the freeway. I, I think it would be good if we're gonna invest money that they, somebody knows it's actually there.
Yeah, and I mean, we definitely have it at the visitor centers and different locations, but yeah, any, anywhere that we can tap into some advertisement, we would definitely do that.
I had a conversation with the Forest Service years ago, and they actually said you could, they could put up a billboard basically to advertise businesses at the entrance of Nibelloop. So I'm sure they could put up something talking about maps, so...
Okay, any more questions on that one? No. Okay. All right, and then the way we're gonna fund a lot of these is our interest income. I budgeted it really low, and our interest income is looking really well. So we're gonna use interest income to cover that, so we don't have to tap into fund dollars. You have any questions on that?
So the interest income is that from where we, most of those money we invest with the state and in their account?
Mm-hmm, from PTIF, yep. Our general fund, PTIF account, yep. Okay, so the second one is, we have customer service training with Vision Bound, and we would like to keep going with that customer service training, and we would like to get two people certified in that training, so when we hire new employees, we can have them help train these new employees, constantly just talking to the current employees about implementing them and how we're doing, and just keep our customer service up on its top game. So to train two individuals, it's about $3,000 for that. So to train two individuals, it's about $3,000 for that. Any questions on that one?
I actually like that we're doing this. Something that I, everybody kind of asked that we did when I ran. That being said, what's the feedback on it? I mean, when I've come in, it sounds like staff's been pretty excited and they pull out their little cards and everything they're working on. And has it been good? We feel like we're getting a good return on our investment with this program?
I can only speak for my department, but I think so. We're meeting every other week to talk about those attributes that we need to be focusing on and how we implement them for the next two weeks. And it's been good. It just brings it to your attention, but I don't know. Other staff can chime in.
It's good?
It's been positive in the.
Positive? Good.
He would like to do a lot more, but we at least want to get some certification so we can do the training.
Sure.
It's pretty expensive to have them commit. So at least this part we'd like to move forward. Like you say, he's got several other trains he'd like to do, but we didn't want to go that far yet.
Okay, well, I think it's great. And what I've seen has been very positive, so I appreciate the staff and everybody working on that, buying into it.
Okay, any other questions on that? Okay, so the next one, the parks and golf courses, they need a safety cabinet to store all of their chemicals. It's a hazard, so they need to buy a cabinet. But I know that it's been on the radar for a year or two, right? So they really need a cabinet. So that's what that is. Any questions on that one? Then, this is for Melanie. Sorry, it's so little. Do you want me to make that bigger for you? Melanie wants to streamline the process of employee or future employees applying online. It will help for them to filter through the applicants much quicker. It'll help them, it'll make it easier for the applicants to apply instead of having to come in, make a paperwork or print it online. I don't know, or sheet is like a legal sort of letter. Anyway, she's trying to just streamline the process. I know she's met with Carl, Mark and Tracy. And Melanie couldn't be here tonight, but if you have questions, she's more than happy to answer them. But Carl and Tracy and Mark can answer questions too that you have for that, but we're just trying to make it easier.
This will probably really help for the temp help during summer.
Yes, absolutely.
Yep, that's, that's one of the big keys.
It'll allow any applicant to apply online and then we can sort it all electronically.
Okay, any questions on that? Okay, the next one, so Kent has a one ton that is worn out. They bought it from the state surplus when the state was done with it. And it's 1997, is that right? Kent, does he hear? Yes, there is. But it's pretty worn out and he needs it pretty badly. It's constantly being repaired. And we budgeted revenues, I'm very conservative on my revenues for when things like this come up. So we are proposing that we will use projected revenues to cover these costs from Storm and from BNC. And this is a, this does qualify for BNC funds, because BNC funds are very certain ways you can spend it on, but it does qualify. Any questions on that one? Okay?
Is that a new truck or used?
That's new. That's new. Then, as you're aware, during the audit, we had a finding that we had too much fund balance. And to protect myself and the city, to not have that finding again, I'm proposing that we transfer over, well, it was a million, 900,000, you can, we'll go to the next one in a minute, but transfer that over to the Capital Projects Fund. That way we don't have that finding because the Capital Project Fund does not have the limitation like the general fund does. And then that will give us time to evaluate and prioritize and decide where we can best utilize that money to serve our citizens. So any thoughts on that?
How much money can you put in the capital fund?
There's no limitation on that. I'm still waiting for that to change, but yeah, there's no limitation, just the general fund.
So does it have to be used within a certain time or, so why doesn't everybody, they get the cap, just throw it in?
Yeah.
So there's really no limitation?
Yeah.
Is there a process to use that money out of the general fund, out of the Capital Project?
Yeah, so what we'll do is you guys will have another budget amendment or for next year's budget. We can decide as staff and as mayor and council how to best use those funds. So if, you know, the new tennis courts, we want to redo the openings by Memorial Park. Or if we have roads that we need to get done, or this building, if there's building upgrades that you want to do, we can use it for anything. Whatever you feel is most effective and most important. Any questions on that one? Okay, so these are the ones that were added after I sent it to you in the packet. Councilman Hewlett is smiling. So we allocated $100,000 in this current budget to upgrade our city offices when you walk in. Try to make it more appealing to people, put a better image out there for people and maybe change those council chambers. So we're not stuck in a Footloose era, because I think it's the exact same as the movie. I know it is because I watched it just to see. But we're trying to do a little facelift for Payson, because when they first come in, we want to show people that we are moving forward. And, you know, we're trying to up our image a little bit. So we allocated $100,000, but that really isn't going to go very far. We're gonna try to use in-house, staff has offered to come in. I offered my husband. I'm not a very good candy person. Probably be more damage to good, but I think we have a lot of people that have offered to come in and help to try to stretch our dollar. But Councilman Hewlett asked Dave if we were gonna be able to do the bathrooms. But the bathrooms alone are about $60,000 to fix. And I went and looked and it does look like a horror film should happen in there. It's pretty bad. And I saw the crap that you always talk about.
Well, it's still there, by the way.
It's still there.
It's still there.
So we're proposing maybe give us a little bit more money, maybe so we can get more technology in here. I know our sound system, whenever someone talks, people look out here and wonder who's talking instead of here. Or maybe have TVs. Just give us a little bit more so we can keep going with that and get those bathrooms done.
Yeah, that's my fault, because I said before we do anything else, I want those bathrooms done.
Yeah, there was discussion in previous city council meetings and I know Brian said, let's get the bathrooms done first. There was discussion about doing this room. And we just looked at the $100,000 and that's not gonna, you know, if we go to the foyer area out there, council room and bathrooms, we're not gonna be able to get much done. But I think Brian thought that bathrooms are first priority, so I thought you guys could discuss this part of this budget amendment. If you, if you want us to just keep $100,000 and come back when it's spent, but I guess we didn't, we didn't think the bathrooms would be the first priority because we try to get this out here, but if the bathroom's a first priority, we'll do that. So just so you guys can have some discussion on it.
Bathrooms wouldn't be my first priority. They need to be done, but they certainly wouldn't be my first priority.
Is my counsel would be that?
Okay, so we come for becoming late here. For my two cents worth, I think that's what we knew. You know, Sarah said we'd like to have a better image for the city. I think that's a good place to start. If we do the restroom, that's a bonus, I think, but especially for here. So I believe it would be money well spent.
Any more questions?
So do you have a proposed increase in that budget? Or is this just the $100,000 you originally talked about?
That would be an additional.
An additional.
An additional, so we're just gonna double it to 200,000. We're gonna get the bathroom, the entryway.
I'd get the bathroom in here in the entry. An office, an office.
Yeah, because that's where people first come when they sign up.
Yeah, as I said, the public reception areas.
Yeah, that's one of our main focuses, because that's the first thing.
We can be cheap on the backside where people don't see, but where people come in.
Tell somebody.
Not cheap, just frugal. Well, sorry, yes, frugal. We can be frugal on the backside.
And if you notice, we took down that other office.
The fishbowl.
And I think it looks really good. We're heading in the right direction, so we're getting there.
We're usually not packed enough, but if our council chambers were packed enough on a regular basis, it would be nice to have a TV that would broadcast what's happening in here.
Right, and that's our goal or our hope is to make a little extra money. So then we can buy that technology, so people can see it out there if we are full or, you know, maybe they can't get in here and still see what's going on out there.
And they have monitors for you guys and then some TVs, so people don't have to look that way.
Yeah.
And they can just look forward. Dave, I have some, Brent, I have some drawings here if they want, if they want to look at them. I don't know.
So if you want to see them, you can talk to Tracy.
Yeah, I'd love to see them. Bring them up. I don't, well, I can't see them right now, but.
Do you want me to bring them up?
Yeah, wait.
We'll keep going and we talked about that, so we don't hold everybody up. Okay, then the second item that was added was flags that have UVU and Payson City logos on there. UVU has offered to help pay for these banners slash flags, so we can put down the, you know, main streets and advertise that UVU's coming and just partner with them. And I'll let Dave.
No, so this morning, Mayor Wright talked to Cameron from UVU. I know the school district's interested in maybe putting, not the school district, the Payson High School. Is interested in putting some, partnering with some flags as well for the high school. And that might work up there by the high school. But UVU had approached us about partnering with some flags on our main city with UVU and Payson City. Now, I think the mayor said that high school's willing to put in a little bit of money. So I just heard about this morning, so I thought maybe we put some in the budget. You know, between UVU, Payson High School and Payson City, maybe we can get some nice flags and put up around our community.
I might just add some too as well. I talked to the high school some time ago. It's a class that Julie Gowan is the supervisor of. And they're quite excited about the possibility, as we've seen in other communities, flags that are displayed on the utility poles. They did tell me, and I'm sure we can show this up, but they've got around $2,000 they'd love to put towards this project. And I know UVU would like to partner very much with the city and with the high school. We've got a meeting between me and the vice president of communication and relations and with the students this coming Tuesday to try and come to a plan that we could present to the city council for that.
One thing I'd say about flags is you need to spend some money and get some good flags. Salem put some flags up in their parking lot. And in three years, there were, two years, there were, actually in the first year, they were following me out when windstorms came through. I was up in Salt Lake area yesterday. And East High School has some up that are really nice, but they're nice, solid fixtures that keep them up. So, you know, just be careful, because if you spend money on flags and you're cheap, then you just wasted money. It's just a complete waste of money.
That's the part that the university can play in. They've done that quite extensively. And Cameron Martin, who I talked to, was looking at his budget to see what he has. So I believe it would be a good linking of the two.
Yeah, and this is just, this is just an effort to say we can come to the table with a little bit of money too. I know several months ago, you said, you know, we might be able to pay for all the flags if your crews can put them up. So we'll continue to work with them. We just, you know, when Mayor had that discussion this morning, I thought maybe we could put a little in there just so that we can keep it moving forward.
I think it's great, because it starts branding us with UVU, so.
Okay, any other discussion on that item? All right, the next two, they are police reimbursements. So they just received the money and they just let me know, they sent it to me thirty days after I'd sent out the budget already. But basically, this is just reimbursements that they've received from different grants and like Walmart, they're uncovering. So I'm just increasing their overtime budget for the amounts that they've received. And then they've also received some donations that need to go into NOVA, as it's been requested by those donors that goes into the NOVA program. So you can see $910 in donations is what they've received and they've asked that it go into NOVA. Any question on those? Okay, that's it.
Do we have any further comments since we're in the public part of our council meeting? Any further discussion from the audience? Okay, so I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Someone have a second? Okay, Brian, you seconded. Okay, well, the motion carries or close the public hearing?
Before carries. You have to vote before carries.
Okay, vote. Aye?
Aye.
Sorry. Okay, the public hearing is closed. Council discussion, do we have a motion on the, on the budget agenda?
Before we go to motion, I gotta say that I'm, sorry, Jill's not here anymore, but I'm, I don't see that the $7,300 on a Nibelou audio tour is worth spending money on. I mean, if I was gonna spend that money, I'd move it over to the tour of Utah. I just, unless somebody's got some data that people actually use this versus like hearsay, I don't, I have a hard time pleading that it's being used.
I think what this is, is a new, because it's gonna be an app instead of.
Well, I know, but who uses it? I can't, I.
There would probably be people coming in that would come in here.
Maybe, and that might be true.
I used to be, I have used to be.
Okay, so that's kind of what I want to know, because I wouldn't go to Logan Canyon and say, hey, I wonder if they've got an app that I can listen to as I go over this canyon. I mean, is that something that people really do?
Well, it's a city byways. The city byways.
Well, I know, but the scenic means I look at it with my eyes, not with my ears.
The city byways have signs and on those signs, one can place the indication there is an app, an audio app that's available. Because they are, the city byways are signed all the way through the.
Right, right. I just think it would be better spent on the tour of Utah itself and.
Is this, is this half of it or are we paying for all of it? Isn't it if I cover in the other half?
No, so actually there is opportunity for some grants. You can see down in there that they're gonna contact the Nibelou and the state partners for financial participation. So this is worst case scenario. Jill even mentioned that maybe they could get other entities to pay for the $7,300 and then we'll just pay the $500 maintenance fee every year thereafter. So this is just the worst case scenario that she would have to spend. So if you want to wait and postpone it till the financial stuff is figured out and she can bring back and say, okay, it's only $1,000, you can do that too.
Are there any of these audio CDs left? Can we get a copy?
Yeah.
I don't know what I'm doing with this.
Yeah, we can get it.
That, that.
Yeah, I'd like to hear it. And I just don't know that it brings people back to our canyon because they have it or to the canyon in the first place. Which canyon can I go to? Oh, this one's got an audio CD.
Well, yeah, I don't know if it's the wisest thing either, but there are 900,000 people that use the canyon. And I wondered if the chambers from both communities as well would pay, because then there would be a year's stay at our hotels or our restaurants or that type of thing.
I'd be, I'd be much more agreeable to that and seeing what Nephi is going to do.
We've reached out to all the other entities, see how much they're gonna contribute. Like I say, this is kind of a worst case. This would pay, but hopefully we can get the other entities to pay for a bulk of it. And then. But if you want to table, like I say, we can table until, until we get more information. It's not a problem.
If I heard Jill, right, she says there's opportunities to put something else on there. So if we could add, talk about Payson, the TNEE, things to do in Payson, I think it'd be well worth it. Because if you got, you know, 10,000 people using it in one year, that's 10,000 people you reach out to, so I'm fine.
Do we need to take these one at a time or do we want to take them as a group?
Depends on your motion. You can do the whole group or do I accept some out?
I don't care the first one. I just recommend looking to other entities first.
Yeah, for sure.
Definitely checking to see, like you said, if we could put more advertising in there for, well, even for Santaquin or Nephi, you know?
Right.
So that they know where they can go besides just getting off the freeway and going right up. There's other places they can see in Payson and Santaquin and Nephi.
Okay.
I mean, if the app is available for pop-ups as they're driving up there, I mean, it's not really an audio live-up, you know, kind of an advertisement. People pay for that $500 maintenance fee. You know, local pizzeria, Mexican food offers to, you know, just kind of, that's just food for thought.
You know, if it pops up automatically, is that something that could, that's involved in that app? It would just pop up automatically? Or do you have to download the app?
Oh, I think you have to download the app.
You have to have the app.
I'm not involved in, I'm just the messenger. But yeah, we can talk with Jill.
What happens to the messenger?
I know. I know.
Okay, any further discussion on any of the other items?
I have something with, I personally think we should start with the foyer. And it's like there's so many other places that money needs to go that I think the people would rather see it go there. I know the foyer does need to be upgraded. It's, not even taking that office out made a big difference. But maybe use what we have and then next year, move on from there. And I know we'd like to get it all done now, but it's just, it's like we're doing this, you know, the master plan, that's gonna be pretty expensive. And there's so many other things where that money could go to. I mean, a hundred thousand don't think much, but you know, it could maybe go and curb a gutter, four or five houses. I don't know. You know, what I'm saying is, it needs to go somewhere more to the people.
And I agree to some extent, but when you, you know, walk into here and you're a developer and you wanna build 1,500 homes in the city of Pace and you're bringing your $9 million project to the table and you walk in here and it's kind of a little bit dingy and you walk in and the bathrooms are dilapidated. You're like, are they going to take care of my project, you know, as I'm three phases in? What's gonna draw my customers here as I'm trying to spend all of this money and make it go? I think it's, it has a lot to do with when you hire an attorney, you don't hire the one that shows up in a rundown Pinto. You hire the one that looks successful. And I, I think that our image we portray is spot on with that. And that's why I think that the stuff in the back, we can hide, but we really look like we're in the eighties.
But do we have enough people that we could get here and get it fixed? I mean, I don't, I don't want, I mean, it is kind of dark up here, you know, I agree with that. But it's like if we had enough, bring in the people that we do have working for us. You know, if they're not busy, I mean, I realize-
I think that's what they do.
That's what they do, but we couldn't even touch the bathrooms.
And I'm not saying the bathrooms, you know, maybe next year that would be, make them gold, you know, I don't know. How many people really go to the bathrooms? Okay, we maybe do because we're here every day. I'm talking.
Developers do, they come in and they do. In fact, Travis mentioned in Orem, a developer came in and said, if you guys really want people to come, you need to update your bathrooms. Is that right Travis, am I? Yeah, so I mean, they've noticed that.
What do you think that we would have, what do you think the budget would be?
Two hundred thousand dollars.
If you really wanted to do a rate, you're gonna look at a bond and-
I'm really worried that a hundred thousand isn't even gonna take care of this front, this front office that we need to do. I, I'm nervous with the technology that we wanna have. That hundred thousand is gonna go like that.
Does this need to be tabled for a work session then or are we, can we get the ball rolling?
I think we can entertain a motion and see how it works.
I think we need to get some expenses up there. Who would do that? I mean, what, do you know what it's gonna cost for those different things?
It's all, it's all just a design phase right now, so it's, it's a moving target. It depends on how nice you wanna finish stuff. So that's, that's the whole, the whole key to the whole project is we can do it, we can do it for a hundred thousand, everything, including the bathrooms. But it just depends on, you know, the technology part's gonna take up a lot, which is worth it to me. But also, you know, we've talked about from the time someone gets out of their car into the building, needs to be changed. All the way to the first point, you know? So to say, to say like, this is gonna cost $175,000, I guess I'm asking, who makes the decision on what? Who makes the decision on the cabinets and this and the technology? That's why it's a moving target.
Yeah, right. Well, you know, I would like to do, whatever we do, we do it right. And we don't scrimp on the money because it is our image. And I just think whatever we do, we do it right. And we don't need the Taj Mahal either, but we need to have something that's very professional looking.
Well, I can, me and Steve have worked on this a lot. I can tell you real quick what we've come up with and, or, I just hate, we're running out of time because the sun's coming out. There's a lot of us that wanna work on this in the office.
And we don't wanna table it. I don't like to table stuff because that stops it. I just wanna know more, it's like, so we have a hundred thousand, I would like to be more near what we really need.
Do you want, do you wanna discuss it for a second?
Do we need him on the microphone?
Yeah.
We're gonna have $200,000. Because we already have a hundred thousand, this is doubling the double that's allowed to.
Yeah, so we already, we already have a hundred thousand, right? So what we discussed, discussed with Steve and Travis and everyone in staff, and I'll start right from the start outside of the building. When you come to the outside of the building, the south part there, the whole grass area where we had to put the boiler in, that'll all be changed. So we'll put, we'll put shrubbery and some vertical plants to kind of hide the building there. Redo the whole grass area. We'll probably, now again, this isn't anything, nothing's final here, but we've put some pavers in there for different sitting areas, right? So make that a nice area. Coming up to the stairs in the building, we take out all the shrubs that are currently there. We'd take out also the tile that was put in there that used to be glass in the foyer out here. We'd move that back to its original glass coming in. So you'd eliminate all the shrub and stuff that captured up now there. We'd have a planting schedule there of four different plants a year so that we change colors or seasonal things that go through there. Once you come into the building, you've seen we've taken out what we call the fishbowl. Then you'd come in here, the back of the, where the clock is there would be a grand kind of entrance here with two big doors and skylights. So none of those windows will be there, these two doors would be eliminated. In this process, we'd move the cabinets. Steve, you jump in here if I'm missing anything. We'd move the cabinet where people go to the front office, we'd move back to the west to create more space for the girls to work. The girls that are sitting there now would be working actually at the cabinet. So when someone walked in, they would be the first, they'd be right there instead of having to get up. So that would be an all-new cabinet. We'd change the entrance into there so that when any of the employees or anyone's trying to get to the back, you wouldn't go through customers at the desk. When you come in here, coming in, we do a solid surface, whether, you know, whether it's tile or hardwood or tile that looks like hardwood, whatever, all the way from there up to here. This point would be moved to the middle so that, I'm not going like this or whoever's presenting and you guys aren't looking that way. This whole, this whole area here, this whole table would be gone. We'd put a new table and bring you guys forward. There would be an entrance that goes out the back, a kind of an emergency entrance where if you guys need to leave, so you don't have to come through here. We'd like to put Dave up here with you guys on the stage as a part of, as a part of the council. And then move, move the two other employees here so it looks like we're working together instead of apart. There would be two or three screens on each wall going back for the, for the community to look at. There would also be a TV camera on the pulpit here so people could see who's presenting. Your counter would have everything so no one would really see your computer or anything on your desk. It would just be, you'd come plug in and it would sit inside. There'd be some cabinetry here in the back office, I'm trying to go fast, sorry. We'd add two more offices here where the sitting area is there. We'd frame in two offices for some of the gals and different, or, or guys that need that. There'd be a new sitting area where the, where the old office punch bowl is there for developers or whoever comes in to wait, so they would be a nice area out there. We'd change all the doors to match here on planning and zoning, so that whole area here would look new. Last thing I can think of is behind, when you step up to the office to look there, there would be a wall there so that you don't see everything behind us. We'd hide all of our, our stuff. And that were about $1 million. No, but that's, that's kind of a clinical version of what we're looking at. But it would be a grand entrance when you come in that it would just be, you know, like, wow, this is nice and that's the council chambers. And then a lot of, like, we would literally gut this room and it would be a whole new, new room. So we would reframe it so we could put, because a lot of these walls are solid walls, so we could fish cable and stuff in there. So we'd totally reframe this and this would be a totally different, different feel.
For my two cents, I think it'd be money well spent.
And then if you give us more money, we'll go all the way down the hall. We'd change the hall to the bathrooms and do those bathrooms. That's where the, that's where the next thing would be is just to, you know, continue down there, down where the new bathrooms are. But it's hard to walk through that hall, which that's not, that's maybe some flooring, you know? And a lot of it's gonna be like retexturing and some paint, some just pretty stuff to make it look different. But that's kind of where we're at. If we, if we get more money, we'll, we have a hundred thousand dollars, we're gonna start, we're gonna do what we can with that. If we get more, then we plan on continuing down or doing nicer electronics and sound systems in here.
So I would rather we budget for it now than you come back and say-
This is what we've done?
Oh, yeah, I would, that way you kind of have to keep it, okay, I know I have this much, I've gotta keep it here.
Yeah, absolutely, I don't, I don't.
That's why I think the council chambers needs to be put with it.
Yeah, and that's, I'm, I'm fine with whatever you guys want.
We can give you expenses when we get though, we're just trying to get designs and that.
And to put it in perspective, there's been a lot of in-staff. I mean, if we hired this out, if you, $200,000 is gonna cost you double if we just hired contractors. So Steve's been great and Travis's department, everyone's kind of used their expertise to try to get this done to make it stretch as much as we can. So I guess, I guess that's, when I say it's a moving target is, I guess, you know, we don't really wanna get into, come in here and say, would you guys like this cabinet oak or cherry or, you know? We don't wanna get into, you know, should the urinal flush right or left? I just-
Whatever you guys in Australia.
Yeah, right, so. If you guys are comfortable with us going up that route, we'd do a hundred thousand.
So are you comfortable with $200,000 to do the trick?
Uncomfortable if you say, do, do whatever you can for $20,000, we're gonna do it and make it work, absolutely.
But I don't wanna do that, I want it to be the first class.
Uncomfortable in saying, we're gonna come up here during the whole process, especially when you guys are probably meeting and down at the meeting hall for council meeting. And no, it's not gonna be, I don't think, I don't wanna speak for Dave or Sarah, but this is never like, hey, give me $200,000, we're just gonna go free for all, you know, and we're gonna, no. I mean, uncomfortable every, every council meeting, coming up here and saying, this is what we just spent on this and this is where we're at. Yeah, no, it's not gonna be, and again-
I worry that you're gonna get close and feel like we've, you fought for this. And if you're there, I'd much rather see you come back and say, three, four steps away through the project, we need another $50,000 to do this or that, and let us decide at that point in time, but-
In my opinion, like if we decided like, okay, if we had a hundred thousand and wherever we start, but if it's outside, we start to get to here, like, I would rather do one thing really nice with the hundred thousand, whether it's the entrance or this room or the office or whatever it is, than, than spread it thin and not get what we want in the-
I think your plans are on par. I think we need to shoot for it and I have no problems with approving the extra hundred thousand. I'm just saying that, you know, I mean, as you get your bids back and things move, let's, let's kind of watch it and see. Let us decide if we, you know, want something different here or there.
Or we could go a bonus if we get an under $200,000. No, I'm just saying.
I just worry about the bathrooms, they're, they're bad. I don't know if the girls bathrooms is as bad as the men's, but it's-
The bathrooms are, I mean, it's all an image. Yeah, and there's, I mean, ultimately it'd be nice to have a new building, but we're just trying to do what we can with what we have to up our image and, and so.
You wanna make the bathrooms a money getter? I suggest you look at the Madonna Inn down in San Luis Obispo, California. People stop there just to take the tour of the men's bathroom.
Okay, $200,000, how long, how much is it gonna take me to get there? $201,000?
I'm right down with you, but just-
No, bathrooms are important, everything's important. I think our image is important and you guys have given money to employees to try to get, to have our employees, which is a huge asset, be more professional and, and we just want to try to bring-
Match our awesome employees.
Yeah, they really are, so. Any questions, sorry, I didn't mean to take up-
No, you're fine, we appreciate it.
Any idea when you would be starting this?
As soon as, Brent handed me those plans tonight. So we're just following our own ordinances, so they would submit like the planning commission and absolutely, like, we wanna get started.
Yeah, especially before summer gets started.
Exactly, so yeah, so we're just, we're trying to just get it through as fast as we can. And that's where this extra money come in, we're like, okay. You know, I've been in contact with Steve, we've talked to a lot of people that are kind of on hold, like Jones painting glass and I talked to some cabinet guys with some electronics. Ron's been great, Ron said he'd come down here and help us redo the lighting, any type of audio, so.
I would think you would have citizens of the city would like to come down and volunteer to help.
Yeah, there you go. Or you can have, people do the Eagles projects, have them too. Yes, anything like that.
We have the supervisors already, so, I'm serious.
No, I think it's a good idea. You bet.
Are we ready for a-
I'm so glad that you went into detail because it clears my mind, I think it clears all theirs because now we, we literally know what you're planning on doing.
Right, okay, yeah, it's kind of, it's kind of vague just to hand you that, but-
It's all right.
There's been a lot of, like, a lot of input, I just drew the small straw to tell you, so.
Okay, so are we ready for a motion?
I'll make a motion that we have adopt resolution number 2018-02-21, amending the fiscal year 2017, 2018 minutes full budget.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we'll start the roll call vote with councilwoman Haya.
Take the women to the tour.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, now we'll go on to number two, resolution, the deferral agreement for Jeff Cooper located at 1397 West 400 North.
I'm standing in for Daniel. This is a whole agreement on a property that is eight and a half acres. It's out west uptown. It is an R, R1A, which is an agricultural. It triggers curb gutter and sidewalk. They're asking to have a, to put an accessory structure on the property on this eight acres. It's, it would trigger the curb gutter and sidewalk on the entire eight acres. And so until it's subdivided and the intent for building lots and things like that, the deferral agreement is, this is really what it was designed for, is to allow them to go ahead and develop their residence but not cause something so prohibitive they couldn't do anything. It is at 1397 West 400 North here and it defers the curb gutter and sidewalks. Questions?
I have a question for Jill. Could this be zoned, the egg-holding zone? Or is it only when you annex that can be? Or can you take something that's already been annexed and put it in the egg-holding? Which would address all this anyway, you wouldn't have to worry about all of this.
I have to review the ordinance, but I know it's developed, it will maybe be used for properties that were annexed and that we didn't have a master plan for. This particular property's been zoned, R1A. At one point in time, Mr. Cooper had it all laid out for development, shown where roads would be, everything. We could look into that, but it was developed for. But whether or not it's a tool that could be used in this case, we have to, we have to look it up.
I personally don't think that he should have to do the whole eight acres right now as, you'd- So the way we have it now, what if they, they put the home there, they've been putting the curb gutter in?
Development triggers public improvements around the property, whether it's agriculture property or right downtown. Anytime you develop or substantially improve the property, it triggers those public improvements to be-
So they're gonna continue to, so there's a hay field there, right? So he would, he would continue to use the hay field? He would maybe have, what, two homes there, his and another home?
Is it a home or is it a out? This is just an out building.
Are we putting on?
It's, it's one home on a barn and a half acre.
A barn, the home's already-
Oh, it's just a barn?
Or shop, yeah.
The home's already there.
I, in the county, when we want a barn put on, we just go out and we give them where it's gonna be at, that's all we do. We put it on the piece of paper and he gives the building permit.
So this is built, this is built, the Pace and City codes, all we're doing is deferring the incurred cost of the curb and gutter?
Yeah. The obligation is still there because it's already been triggered by the application for the accessory building. And entering into this does not do away with that obligation, it defers it.
And so we...
Do we have a deference date, just until?
It's deferred until further development. There are several, um, items that can trigger it. And in fact, the city, if there is, um, desire of the city council to have it developed, uh, in the future, they can actually send a notice and within thirty days, the homeowner has the obligation of either initiating that or the city can go in and initiate it and, and put a lien against the property for that, those improvements. And it is because it's deferred, it's not, it doesn't go away, the obligation is there. And it's, it's how cities, um, put in their public improvements.
So do we need to make a motion for that?
Um, the motion will be for, um, the resolution to defer the improvements on the Cooper property.
So I move that we...
Any further discussion? We know, I don't have a problem with that. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion.
So I move that we grant the applicant the deferral agreement until at such time it is developed and it goes into effect.
There's a, yeah, there's, the underlying agreement is what we're asking that the mayor, um, the, the resolution overrides the mayor's executive...
Yeah, just say "to the resolution," not add all the other stuff.
To the resolution.
Do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, uh, roll call vote, starting with Councilman.
Aye.
Councilman Hite.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Resolution number three, municipal, before we talked about our, sorry, Mayor.
Right, should've put you before we talked about redesigning our council chambers. Sorry, made you sit through that.
Alright, thanks.
You bet. Okay, resolution number three, municipal water, wastewater planning program annual report. Turn some time over to Sarah.
So this is an annual report that we have to do for the state. Um, it's pretty straightforward. We just have to go where everything what the plants did for the two thousand seventeen. We have, um, what we discharged, our averages, our wish list of our capital improvement. Do you guys have any questions on it?
Did you have anything else, Danny, that needs to be addressed?
Just to show, you know, I went down and talked to Sarah this afternoon, uh, quizzed her a little bit about it and, uh, I found out that, uh, we are in compliance and that, uh, it's, it's a format the state, uh, gave us to fill out and so there was nothing abnormal about the report from my understanding.
Yep, it is required that we fill it out, so that it, we're just, I'm trying to do it early.
Okay, any further discussion?
No.
Okay, do we, do we have a motion? To accept the, uh, report?
There is a, also a resolution, so, uh, just pass the resolution and accepting the report so it can be sent forward.
I'll make a motion that we accept the resolution, uh, on the, so our municipal wastewater planning program, so we can pass it forward.
Is there a second? Second, oh, we got two of them. This time we'll go, roll call from Councilman Christensen.
Aye.
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 Motion carries.
Thank you.
Well, the resolution number four, amendments to the Pason City fee schedule. Turn some time over to Carl, you ready?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We're just proposing to update some of our fees in the recreation, uh, programs. Um, some of those fees, if you've reviewed through those, uh, some of them, the typical programs are in the five-dollar range for some of those, programs like a youth baseball, uh, on certain age groups. Some of the larger ones like swim team jumps a little more. We are ramping in the county fees that have gone up recently to fifteen dollars into one fee, instead of adding a second fee on. The beginning swimming, for example, is, uh, it's a shorter time and the intermediate and advanced are longer, that's why they're, they're more money. Um, other than that, that's, that's what we've done. If you notice as well, if, if there's questions, but like the adult volleyball, women's volleyball plays eighteen games and the co-ed volleyball plays fourteen games, that's why those prices are set different. Same in softball and different things. So were there any specific questions that you may have? We're trying to get these in line with, with costs that are going up for, to support the program. Okay?
And we compare these to other cities?
There's, there's constantly comparisons going on with, with other cities, yes. Our, um, county recreation organization has a spreadsheet that's continual, or that all the cities put prices into, and we're aligned with those.
Okay, any, any further discussion? Is there a motion that we can act on?
I move that we increase these fees for the recreation. It's a resolution. I, I move that we increase the fees on the resolution.
Second?
Can we, can we work on it just a little bit? Does, you have a resolution to amend the Pason fee schedule, does that work?
Can't get my computer. Okay, yes, just what he said. To amend the resolution fee schedule to reflect the updated recreation fees.
Okay, now do we have a second?
I second that.
Okay, let's start with Councilman Christensen.
Aye.
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 Motion carries.
Appreciate it.
Okay, Sarah, the work session fiscal year, uh, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen budget.
Alright, so this is a lot of information. This is all of the capital project plans that, um, have been submitted to me and I am just gonna just start at water and we can discuss it. You guys can ask questions. This is a draft document. It's going to be a work in progress for me to get all these set and then I'm gonna do a ten-year analysis to determine where our fees need to be to be able to meet the needs that we have to meet. And a lot of this will, um, have impact fees to help cover these costs. So if you look at the top, we've tried to show where the funds are going to come from to cover these costs. And I'm gonna give you access to Dropbox after tonight's meeting, so you can look at these, but for water, for example, they have these sheets behind and it gives you a little bit more detail. So you'll see on the water, the three hundred north, one thousand east, eleven forty east project. If you come over here, we'll have a detailed sheet for you and they have a description and justification as to why this project needs to be done. So it says, "This project provides for the installation of new water main service line and fire hydrants for existing main line size deficiencies." And then it tells you when they projected to occur and how they expect to fund it. So I'll send all this information to you through Dropbox. I tried sending it through the packet and it just was too big to do it through email, but it is on the public media news website, but a lot of those have already changed the spreadsheet, so I'll keep those up to date in Dropbox for you.
I have one question, Sarah. Are you gonna put last year's also, so we can compare and see
Sure.
how much it changed or if they're staying on schedule or what's happening?
Yep, I can put that on there for you. So is there any questions? I, I don't know how in-depth do you want to go? So we can go sheet by sheet for each one of these, or we can look at the overview and then if you have certain questions on certain items, we can cover those.
My suggestion is kinda fly high right now and let us go through this and look at it and pull everything up and then ask questions, is that, that'd be my suggestion.
So one of the big projects in water that you'll see is there is, um, irrigation upper zone additional eight inch and sixteen inch main lines. And those, feel free to jump in, Brent, if I say anything wrong, which I tend to do. But you can see, um, when I included these sheets, it says, "This project provides additional capacity to serve city recreation fields and provide adequate pressure to the upper zone." Is that right? Okay, so that's what that is for and in order to do that, we'll probably have to bond for that. Dave and I are gonna meet in science to talk about the options to bond. We are, we're already pretty heavily in debt in the water and sewer funds. So we'll see what we can do with our four-bay bond. That, that eats up quite a bit of our water fund.
Do we, uh, have somebody who's gonna help with that?
We have been working on that constantly. We're always in communication with them, trying to figure out how to make it work for both parties. But he has made payments. Uh, I believe it was a hundred thousand dollars total is what he's paid, just out of goodwill. So I think he's, he's showing that he wants to work with the city.
Goodwill or contract?
Both.
Okay.
Cause he didn't have to enter into that contract.
That's true, but it...
Yeah. And then the other big one is nine hundred thousand dollars, the one right after that, it's the irrigation for the lower zone additional twenty-four inch main line. And this is to equip, or to provide enough water for the Arrowhead Trail subdivision that's coming, and that's a nine hundred thousand dollar project.
And how much of that will come from impact fees?
So impact fees, they have a hundred and eighty thousand and three hundred and sixty thousand. And I'm sure, Brent, is that just for this current year? Should we, should we have more impact fees? So on this Arrowhead Trail, you have a hundred and eighty thousand in impact fees for fiscal year nineteen and then three hundred and sixty for fiscal year twenty. Will there be, will, will there be more coming in after that?
It could be. It's just, it depends on that subdivision, as they come in, we can, I just said we wanna save, you know, plant something we don't have, you know?
So, so is that to build out the impact fees for those, that whole subdivision, or just part of those two, first two years, part of the impact fees?
Just part of it.
So it, it'll be more than it's, you build it all out, there's gonna be more? Does, does this tie into the existing lines that we already have, where we're having pressure problems in the city? Or is this for new development only to...
This line will tie into where the truck line that comes to Petitee and then it'll take it out to there. We'll make a tap off of this to help the lower parts of that system, but this is ma- mainly just for that subdivision.
Okay.
Cause without, without doing that, those, they will not have any P I water.
Well, there, we, we'll have, we'll have water, it just won't be pressurized, right?
We can start subdivisions now, we just can never finish that.
So...
Without it stopping the upgrade.
Yeah, no, that's, that's fine. I just don't wanna see you doing a dead-headed line from the ponds down to twenty-four inches and we still have the same problem at four o'clock in the morning when we're watering, so...
Okay.
If, if you're leaning in the right direction, that's all I'm grasping.
These two projects will help that, but
Thanks.
If you wanna solve that totally, it's unfortunately tearing out a large part of the existing system.
Yeah.
Cause it's four and six-inch lines that
The right side.
are not big enough.
But this will help.
I'd like to see a look at all those. If I could ever see that plan, that'd be nice. Like, I, I, like that map she had, I'd like to see it, just for my personal, you know?
We have it on our file from a couple weeks ago, don't we?
The master plans will help answer more of those questions.
Yes. Okay.
Yeah, so all of this will be in Dropbox, all of these backup sheets. And one thing that I really look at is anytime I see deficiency, to me, that's, you know, kind of alert, we need to be fixing those. And you can see, they, they have one, it says eleven fifty east Salem Canal Road Waterline System Deficiency. Brent, can you expand on that one for us?
There's a cul-de-sac somewhere on the end of, on the east end of town. The line is a two-inch line. We've repaired it three times already. We need to replace it. All we do is just keep band-aids, patch it. We need to replace the line. And then afterwards, there's actually a street light in the middle of the cul-de-sac. Ron's gonna come in, remove that, and then Kate was gonna come in and repaint it. It, it's in bad shape, but we just, the wall line is just blowing up for Gressanti Go, so we just fix it and then it blows up and then we fix it again. We just need to replace the whole line.
Are these on the five-year plan or are these new?
This one actually came in, that, we added this one in from last year. On the third patch, I decided, eh, let's just start over.
Okay.
The five-year plan is a work in progress.
Right, right.
Yeah, this is just to kinda get the ball rolling, where you typically, uh, capital improvement budget isn't usually adopted or, you know, approved until the middle of March timeframe, just cause it's such a, a huge project for each department and balancing the fees and funding and all that stuff, so... This is just a time for you to ask any questions that may, you know, pop up as you look at these projects that they have listed. Or if you see something maybe we've missed.
No, I just, so I've seen some of these types and talked to him about it, how, I mean, they do need to be bigger, but, I mean, they're just like whole, we're gonna just keep blowing up. We're putting a Band-Aid on it. We've gotta fix it right, or he's, it's actually a lot bigger more. Every time they have to just go keep putting that Band-Aid on it, we have to fix it right.
Yeah, patches inside of patches when they have smoke, so...
Yeah.
We don't wanna it blow up and
Right, yeah.
not have water.
Yeah.
Yep, and, um, they have on here the irrigation meters that we've been trying to install. We did receive a grant last year for three hundred thousand, as long as we matched it, but we haven't been approved for that again. So I don't know, do you four see that we're gonna get that again?
We've been told we can't apply anymore. We're, David and I have been working with them on that, but we've been told we're done. But we're still knocking on the door.
Yeah, so if we wanna finish...
I took that off this year just because of all the water project, cause I don't think we can do all, so I just rotated that back in there.
Yeah.
As I've been on some of these water boards, they've talked a little bit about this or in conversation, wherever, that, that's gonna be mandated from the state.
It will.
That at usage source, everything will be metered. How far out is that, so that we're not blindsided with that happening to be done in a four-month period of time?
No, they're still talking about, I don't, they haven't set a date, but that's...
They haven't set a date. I think they would give us time to do it, but we don't know when it's coming.
Okay.
That's why we want it.
I mean, this year, it's not months, but it's...
Right, right, but if it's, if it's gonna cost us ten million dollars, I'd rather spread that out over the next, however long we possibly can, so...
Well, and those meters, they provide benefits because it helps with, uh, water, water usage. People are gonna be more conservative if they're gonna be billed for it. And then it also will help bring in revenue for the city, because then we can bill for what they're using, instead of just having all this water just being used for free, in essence. I think, what's the P I charge a month? Sixteen bucks a month, I think. So I, if, these meters, I feel are very important that we get them in, cause it will help with our conservation and also bring in some revenue that the water needs. I, I don't think we're gonna get that grant, so if we, even if we budgeted three hundred thousand dollars a year, I don't even know if they would have the budget necessary to do that. So that's another thought to just keep in the back of your mind.
So as we're developing, are we, are, are they paying for those to put on there?
Yes.
Okay, that's...
All the, all the houses, everything gets all the meters from like P I N or...
And I, I think we discussed that we wouldn't start, uh, using those to monitor until everything's in, is that correct?
We'll collect the data and, but then we can't, we don't, we can't, we can't not build any of those.
But it'd be beneficial to just let those customers, citizens, know what their usage is?
We could do that.
I mean, I, I'd, I'd share it with them, I mean, they might say, "Oh, I'm using a lot of water. In five years, I might have to..." I don't know, if they've got it, I might as well let them see the usage.
Fences actually have the ability to let them interact and look at their own water usage.
Yeah, no, I mean, we can do that.
Yeah, I, I...
Well, if we don't know how to do that, then we won't, then, cause I know my parents have had one for years and years and they don't know how much water they use, so...
We're, we're gonna use the data, we just, people count, said, "Don't charge until we get it."
Oh, yeah, and I, I agree a hundred percent, but I think they oughta be able to see what it is they're using right now.
Yep, for sure. Okay, any other discussions on water? And as you know, we're still trying to work on four-bay, that's a big one for water. Any other questions? That's pretty, pretty bad. I think I started with the worst one first, get it over with.
Waste water's gotta be worse at some point in time.
Yeah.
Not yet.
Not yet.
Close. Now that's how you give them the water up, because the water...
And that is a good transition to waste water, here we go. Okay, so, um, we're continually saving to upgrade the sewer plant. We've been putting away three hundred thousand dollars a year, so we've, by the end of this year, we'll have close to a million dollars for that sewer upgrade. by the end of this year, we'll have close to a million dollars for that sewer upgrade, and, um.
So is that a great bond where the other happens?
Yeah, we'll have a bond, and it, it keeps moving, it.
Keeps going up.
Yeah, it keeps, you know, we started at seventeen million, and then when we were thinking about going with Salem, it was fifty-four million, and now it's thirty-four million, so it's a moving target as well.
Well, if it keeps going up, let's go with Salem for fifty-four million.
Why, why is the change, what's the, just the cost of construction or?
Well, there's different technology that you can use, one of the types of technology that he's looking at is Jeff's here.
No, Jeff's thick.
Jeff's thick, but it produces algae, I don't know what it's called, what is it called? Anyways, it produces algae, and that's expensive, this, uh, technology, but you possibly could be selling that algae for other uses.
We've asked, we've asked the state for a deferral, um, one of the reasons is because, uh, North Davis Sewer District, uh, they're using this technology with the algae, and, uh, and the state's pretty involved with it, so we're asking if they would defer that so we can get a little data on how it's working. And if, because if that technology works, uh, it works, but if, if it does what we think it's gonna do, it, we can get enough money off that algae to make some of the bond payments, so even though it's, it's more expensive upfront, I think we have a revenue stream to, to make the payments without having to.
Is this like a biofuel purpose, is that?
It's all sorts of things, there's a huge list of uses.
Yeah, it's supplements, it's biofuel, it's, it's all sorts of things.
Yeah.
But that, that's where part of the problem is, is though, is that it's, you're, it's a, a market, and do you want to invest in a commodity that could go up or down as part of your sewer treatment?
Well, I asked the, the consultant, I said, is this gonna be saturated with everybody doing this, and then it won't be worth hardly anything, and he said there is an unlimited need for this, he said, I don't think you have to worry about this, the market being saturated. That's him just talking, but I'm a little bit skeptical, you know, supply and demand, basic economics tells you.
Well, they're running trains, brother, let's get it running.
Yeah, yeah, so.
So, so that's why we asked for the deferral from the state, uh, I don't, we haven't heard back from them yet, I don't believe Travis, have we?
We haven't.
But, uh, if, if, if they don't allow it, the deferral, our consultant said we can use some chemicals in the short term to meet their regulations, you know, by twenty twenty. But, um, if, if it is something, I think, uh, Davis County Sewer, they just entered into a contract, I think they're paying either fifty or seventy-five cents a pound, which, which is good, uh, it's anywhere from zero up to two dollars a pound, if you, if you got over a dollar a pound, you, you'd almost make all your bond payment without three hundred grace any rates. So I think it's worth looking into, Spanish Forks, uh, looked into it as well, uh, there's probably a possibility up at the Montana plant, we'll go up there and take a look what's going on, but we're still waiting to hear back from the state. But I, I think it, I think it behooves us to, to do our due diligence on that before we decide what kind of technology we're gonna use.
So that's why the price keeps going up and down, because it's different technology that they're looking at and seeing which would be best for.
Is this a technology that, that the Chinese are heavily involved in, is that what I'm hearing?
I haven't heard that, this, this is a company from the United States, it's Clearad, the company's name, and they did.
Oh, okay, the Chinese buy the algae. Yeah, that's what they're, they're major.
Well, that might be.
That's, that's what I would, I'd heard, the Chinese will buy it, so.
Yeah.
Didn't we know China?
And I know Jeff has been working really hard to clean sewer lines to prevent backups, because that's a huge liability if we have backups and we have sewer in people's homes, so he's been really making that a priority to clean sewer lines and remove, uh, tree roots out of the, the sewer lines. So he's been working on that as well, but, you know, he wants a, it looks like a new jet truck, he's put in there for twenty twenty. Jet trucks are quite expensive, you can see there, it's about five hundred thousand dollars, but it's a valuable piece of equipment that allows them to clean the lines and do everything they need to keep those lines in good condition.
Does he already got one of those for his nephew?
He has one of those, how old's the jet truck?
We have one and Jeff has one.
Yeah, how old's Jeff's jet truck, do you know?
Three years.
How many?
Yeah.
No, I told her that, and they had it before I started. It's probably, yeah, it's a thirteen, it's five years old.
How long did it last?
About five years.
He has a whole life with a lot of hours, obviously, and it depends on the use, but.
They get more expensive to maintain the older you get.
The, the last jet truck that we, we sold to the water department, or no, you got the, you're on to that, you went to the solid waste department when the sewer got their new one, so we try to utilize that with the other departments as well.
Kate, any other questions on sewer, other than the big upgrade to be continued, I guess, stay tuned.
Um, so, can we just ask, have you guys called, you know, to see if on this, to see if we can get it extended, when was the last time we talked to them?
They put it in, they put it in the first part of the year, so we, I don't know, have you heard that, say it all?
I asked Jeff to call Brad and find out, but I haven't heard back if he's gonna.
Did you check on that?
Yep.
Yeah, Brad, what's his last name?
Brad.
Brad Rasmussen with Aqua Engineering, that's who our consultant is, and we've met with him multiple times, and he's doing everything he can to go to bat for us. Okay, so electric. Ron, help me out here if I screw anything up. I feel like they should be presenting the budget because they know it inside and out, and I kinda am just the messenger, like I stated before, but, um, one of the big ones that Ron has on here is a substation, and I can pull that up for you.
Where?
Unless Ron just wants to tell you where that's at.
Southwest area.
But that's going to be paid for by the impact fees. Sorry, my computer's being a little spilt.
It's strawberry electric. Nine-year-old.
It'd just be in our own.
Yeah, I guess it's still pulling up power, it's a big document. Sorry, it's still fading, Ron, do you wanna tell us where that substation is going to be going?
It'll be in the, the southwest area, take care of all the Salisbury development and anything around the temple and the backup for industrial.
Are we gonna need anything new on the Arrowhead for all those houses that are going in there?
Uh, yes, uh.
Depends on services?
Yeah, I think it depends on which happens first. I'll hold that comment for three, four more weeks. Uh, but yeah, we will need one out there, but we'll have the impact fees, it'll take care of that, transmission line's right there, so all we have to do is drop that substation, so.
Okay. If I can pull that, thanks, Ron. Um, Ron, is there anything that you wanna hit on in your budget?
Uh, no, we're just gonna continue, uh, we wanna complete LED upgrades of all, the rest of the street lights, I think we have about seventy more, and then they'll all be LED, and, uh, uh, we also wanna complete lighting on American Way, and then out by Ridge Stone to the freeway, along that intersection there.
How much does LED, LED lighting save, do we know?
Uh.
I mean, I assume it's long-term, cause the cost of putting in a new light.
I think, I think we're saving, because of the amount we have now versus what we had, I think we're saving about thirty thousand dollars a year in energy costs. It, it's a big number when you get into this many. So.
Good.
You can see he's, um, working on the transmission line on the east side. I made it bigger, so it's harder to see, so I'm gonna pull that. But the transmission line on the east side, Ron, does that serve as new development, or is that old, what is the transmission line on the east side?
What it'll do, it'll, we're trying to complete a ring, which gets us more, if we have a problem on the transmission, we can switch it out and keep the lights on. Uh, so basically, we'll be coming down, uh, Eight South, and then kicking back to the south, and then crossing the freeway, and then swinging around Seventeen Hundred West to our industrial sub. It's, and, uh, it's been surveyed, uh, and, and engineers are now starting to put that together and, uh, see what type of easements. Most of it, ninety, ninety-seven percent will be on, uh, uh, city right away, so. So it, uh, we won't have much of that, but it's, once we get that loop in, that'll definitely help us with our reliability on the transmission side.
Okay, so you can see a lot of his, um, his projects are covered by impact fees, but he also does have some big ones. In twenty twenty-three, it looks like, and twenty twenty-two, that there may be a need for bonding. And the big one in twenty twenty-three is for the new power resource, does this have to do with the nuclear?
Yep, in twenty twenty-two, our San Juan coal-fired generation that we're buying from them, uh, will cease to exist, they'll be shutting it down, and so we'll have to replace seven megawatts of that generation with either S M R or, uh, some other type of resource, so. We just wanna be sure we're preparing for that, uh, that may be bonded either through P A C E and or through U W A M S, depending on which way, what resource we go with.
Are you guys okay? Yeah. All right, okay, so solid waste, Kent, um, has on here for next year, we have our compactor that we purchased, uh, last year, and we are just making our payments on that, so that's what that is, we would like to connect the scales, we're going to detail on that, Kent, on connecting scales, what that does.
It's getting time with our master plan to move the scale, the actual scale house location, and connect that into a system that works with, in conjunction with the gravel operation.
Okay, and then he's allocated fifty thousand dollars for the next four years to work on his solid waste master plan. And then you can see in the future years, he's got the upgraded compost facility and the security fencing and system for the scale house operation. Hey, storm drain. This is one I wish we could just fix throughout the whole city.
Right.
I know a lot of people feel that way. Um, so he has on here the Ridge Lane for fifty thousand, and then the Two Hundred North and Two Hundred West project. Kent, do you wanna, uh, tell us about those two projects you have, uh, budgeted for next year?
We acquired a piece of property at Palm Ridge Lane, that is, there's eleven acres, correct me if I'm wrong, there's eleven acres of development that drains to that parcel, so we're, we've done some soils analysis, and we're trying to figure out how to remedy that, so it doesn't erode down the hill under the subdivision wall, that's in process. The Two Hundred North project is under in design right now, hopefully we'll go out and bid the next two or three weeks.
Can you tell me what Ridge Lane's address is?
Ridge Lane.
That's right.
That's right.
But the street, the street is Ridge Lane.
It's Ridge Lane, but what's the address?
It's where it dead ends.
Goose Nest.
It was, it was where the calls, we're gonna build a house a couple of years ago, and we ended up doing a property kinda swap purchase, because that's where all the water drains for the streets, and we were like, it would've been a liability for us to allow him to build it, so we took it over and that, we, we've had it in the plan kinda for a couple of years, but it just hasn't been as high a priority as some of the other stuff.
We have to be really careful so we don't supersaturate and wash out the subdivision below us.
I just didn't know.
It's about nine hundred, nine fifty east.
Just before the, before the goose, goose.
Okay, and then you can see in twenty twenty-three, there's a five million dollar bond, is that to take care of all the curb and gutter in the city, Kent, or what does that cover?
That's, looking at it, that, that number, since we did the audit, that number's closer to ten million.
Oh, geez.
There's twenty-three miles in front of the gutter, and it's non-existent, it's simple.
It just gets better and better.
Yeah, it, it, I've heard in, I don't know all about it, but is there not a program in place to help citizens that want to do the curb and gutter now? I, I, I hear rumors of this, I've never heard anything, is that, why is that not more public, is my question?
Wait, are you talking about a special improvement area?
Sure, I, I don't know what I'm talking about. I'm gonna be completely honest, I just, curb and gutter is one that comes up a lot, and I, and I've heard there's payment programs, things like that, that have been in place for years, but nobody utilizes it, cause we don't know the citizens.
We had two last fall that worked through, uh, the city manager that we financed, two problematic areas, other than that, we've offered and, and the installation of curb and gutter has dropped to, we used to do miles a, a season to a couple of hundred feet. Everybody that's got curb and gutter is done, and those that don't have it generally don't want it, they don't wanna pay for it, they want somebody else to pay for it.
Well, I, I mean, I, I've talked with my neighbors and stuff, and we're kinda tired of the hill washing down into my front yard and things, and and so we've kinda discussed it and looked at it as an option, but there's no, like, pamphlets, information, what, what is it that entails? What's the cost to us, do we need to just approach you, do I send everybody down that wants to talk to you?
Normally, we use it on a case-by-case basis, and, and problems arise, we've given that as a, as an option to, to solve the problem. Um, it, it, the payments have varied from zero to five years, uh, it's just that other eagle, but for the most part, we've used it to resolve flooding problems.
Okay, would you like some sort of advertising with that, where we show neighbors that have flooded because they didn't have curb and gutter and say, maybe we do like P, a Facebook, social media, P R campaign that says.
Even put it in the newsletter.
Yeah, this, this'll save your house, I mean.
Well, the challenge is, if you do that, we need some, a lot more money, cause Kent does not have the funds.
Well, so what you do is you'd say, you'd advertise it, you'd hit it up, and then when you open it up, it says we've got two hundred thousand dollars or however much, until it's, I don't know how much we have, but you'd say, this is how much we have this year, you can reapply next year if you want. But I mean, if the money's there and we've got funds there, like, I, I don't care if we open the floodgates, and we have ten years' worth of work, you know, we just have to work through it piece by piece, but then it's not everybody else who's already paid for their curb and gutter paying for someone else who doesn't wanna pay for it.
That's, that's the problem right now, is, is, I've, I've tried S I Ds, Special Improvement Districts, with absolutely zero response.
So.
And you have to be careful that you fund these, because it's really easy to get stiffed as a city, for them.
Sure.
So we have to find a way to have some kind of backing that we can.
You put liens on there, have one?
Get, get back from them, because if we go out and fund all these projects, but then the citizens don't pay and they hit the road.
Can we do that? Like, can we do that? Put a lien on the property?
Yeah, so I mean, we have to protect ourselves.
So they have to agree to.
Well, right, so if they're entering an agreement with us to get special funding, then that, yeah.
I could see that a reason why the lien wouldn't, wouldn't back it, but I, I think that's an underutilized aspect of our curb and gutter, and I, and I know that there's a lot that people out there that, that need, I, I'm a fence editor, I have half my properties curb and gutter, half is not, so.
We had a resolution at one point, we can pull that up and send it to all you guys to look at it, that, you know, the city would participate in the asphalt tie-in, once it was done, and and I don't know if that's been used for quite a while, but we can look at all those options again.
So what did they do at Spanish Forks, when she went in there and just, Marie said, we're doing curb and gutter, and people threw their hands up and said, whoa. They just had to do it, what did she do to get that through?
I think, I think they happened before Marie up, but I think they, they, uh, they made a decision long, long time ago that curb and gutter was gonna be put in, um, and I think the areas that didn't, they went in, put it in, the city paid for it, but that was a long time ago, and the city was smaller.
The city paid for it?
I, the, the city mandated that any new homes had to have curb and gutter, the old part, I think they just went in and, I don't know if they bonded for it. I, I just.
I, I've heard that it was part of the bill, they added it to their utility bills.
Yeah, I thought, but I don't know.
No, I don't think they, that was clear back, I mean.
This was, this was forty years ago.
Well, it's, it's, it's back in probably the seventies, cause I, I, I remember my, my parents saying, everybody, everybody that on the Spanish Forks City Council got voted out, but they stuck with it, P A C E Council didn't do it at the time, said, no, we're not gonna. Pason Council didn't do it at the time, said, no, we're not gonna put that on our citizens and now it's the smartest thing they ever did because they got it done. And, and we didn't.
For a year.
And so we do mandate that it's all put in on the new stuff now, so now it's just the, the older parts of town, how are you gonna build it?
How do we?
We, we've got SIDs that we can try. We tried down on Second West and
They would do it?
You have to have, on an SID, you have to have at least fifty percent that, that will agree to it. And we couldn't get the, the support to do that, so it, it's a, it's a quandary. We can try to budget each year and just put some in, the bad parts, or we can, we can try to offer an incentive if they'll, if they'll pay for so much, we can do the, the tie-ins, the asphalt. Or we can, we can go
What, what is it costing right now to put in a linear foot of curb and gutter? Curb gutter and five foot wide sidewalk?
About twenty-one dollars.
A linear foot? I'll give you my address, come on over.
This really is a subject that needs to be broached and we don't really deal with it. It's, I mean, I've talked to Kent and I mean, I've got the pictures of where it's not, and it is, it's just like you'll have two houses and four houses not and then around the corner, there's nobody there on the corner. And then you've got the next house done. I, I don't, this is what I'm wondering is, I mean, have we talked to other cities to, to see how like they pursued it to push it through? I mean, I realize nobody's gonna fight because it's like, well, I bought my house twenty-five years ago. It's not my fault the curb and gutter wasn't there. Well, basically, that's their property and it's their responsibility. So I guess what we need to do is check and see, you don't want to force people to do it. We want them to do it because it's, it's the betterment for the city and that's what we need to get to understand. This is better for the city. This will help us bring more, more building and, and better things to Pason. If we can show them, hey, look, we've got our curb and gutter in, we've got our roads, we've got things working well. People are gonna look at us different like they do at Spanish Fork because they have that all done. So I guess I'm asking you, you're both attorneys, so.
The mechanisms that, that Kent has spoken of are those that are
And those are really good. And so I'm wondering if we, if we had, you know, just, I don't know if we had to go talk to him personally.
So the question I have is, is, there was a comment that was made that if we, if we advertise it, we would have too many. And then we also were told that nobody wants to do it either. Like, I'm a little confused there.
The comment was, how do you pay for that multitude that comes in if it's not?
Right, but if they're not coming in and we've offered it before.
Well, I, I think that it's, the key that you were saying that it's a fifty percent participation. But I, I, I think we need to find out who is interested in this participation aspect of it. I mean, hey, because they say we want to do it, does that put us on the hook and we're obligated, we're gonna show up within ten business days to put it in? Or is this, we can allocate X amount of money and, and try to alleviate that five million dollar bond that you've got four years down the road that has now doubled. You know, we're just trying to, to see what we can do to get the ball rolling is what we're trying to say. So even if we threw it in the newsletter or whatever, if, you know, on the, on the website.
Maybe we have to decide how much we can afford in the budget.
Right, but I mean, if we found out
Well, the money's gone, the money's gone, then we can do it again next year.
And the large challenge is if we start putting curb and gutter in, we have to take that water somewhere in a storm drain system, which we don't have either. So you gotta remember that. It's not just putting the curb and gutter in, then you have to put the water somewhere.
Right, well, I mean, I, I have a
Does that include the master plan?
We, we, maybe we can move this to another time.
It will be part of it, but I mean, it depends how much detail you want to give it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it sounds like master plan is needed again.
But I still think we need to start somewhere.
It's not as easy as just putting in somebody's curb and gutter. You then have to put in the infrastructure to handle
The water.
Where that water goes, because right now it's just going on your yard.
Well, I, actually, I've been in a storm drain ditch that's now full of dirt because the road people came and filled the gravel on the hill, the rain washed it down and it's all ended up in the storm drain ditch, so it's half full of the gravel that was once on the hill. So that's where I, I look at. But I can't put curb and gutter over the ditch because the culverts are not far enough out of the road either, so. I mean, there's myriad of problems and that's kind of what I'm looking at, that, that we need to just start stepping towards it and looking at it and see what we need to do to get the word out there and where we're headed. But.
We'll try to get you some information.
We'll take any information from anybody that has great ideas. It's
Yeah, it's a tough one.
It is.
Well, and especially you gotta have somewhere to put it. So I've mentioned, do we need to build a storm drain retention on before we start doing the curb and gutter? Because it sounds like you gotta start at the bottom and then start working your way up.
Well, and that's true. If we've got a bond on there for five million dollars, but we don't have a bond somewhere for the storm drain, then what are we gonna do with the five million dollars curb and gutter? Or is that, is that both?
Does it subplace those?
Is that?
Is the five million dollar bond curb and gutter and the storm drain? Or do we need to?
It's, it's kind of, it's kind of the double edged sword. You have to address both if you do it.
Right.
So does that five million cover that?
But does the five million cover both that we're projecting?
It's a starting point.
I, I guess I have a hard time when we approved a budget today where we moved nine hundred thousand dollars into account for savings and we're, you know, wondering.
Capital approval, we, we can decide it.
Yeah, you guys get to decide.
This is, that's what I'm saying. Let's, let's move on and we'll look at it all as a whole picture.
Yeah, as we go through this, Simone, we have, we should be maybe melts and maybe we say, let's put it there.
Right.
There's a lot of places to put it.
Maybe you can split it, but we have to put it.
Yeah, I mean, you've got needs everywhere, water, sewer, streets. Yeah, you, it's the balancing act of trying to prioritize and, yeah. It's fun. I've been trying to do audits over and over and not budgets. Okay, next one, streets. Okay, so this is Kent's again. He has on here a hundred and fifty thousand for three hundred north and six hundred west. Kent, is that, is that a full layover? What does that cover?
Some of it ties in with some of the water and sewer projects.
Okay.
If you go back into the other, back into the file, the, the details and that, it's co-mangled with other departments.
Yeah.
Is this the same water situation that we discussed at the last city council meeting?
Yeah, so the public works, all the departments got together and tried to mine up all of the projects. So if they've got to replace water lines, the sewer, electric, you know, all utilities, so they did a really good job trying to mine it out.
Thank you. That's gotta be a hard job. I appreciate that.
Yeah, they've done a good job. I, I think this isn't fun, work on budgets, but they've done great.
I have a question, a couple of questions on the streets. Um, only see one parking lot in here in the next five years. Do we have plans for some of the parking lots?
Parking lots are, I can't pay for parking lots with B and C money. It has to be funded somewhere else.
Right, but this, isn't this for all the streets? This isn't just a budget for B and C, is it? Don't you have a budget for?
This is just B and C.
So do we have something else for other streets that not come from B and C?
My, there's maintenance money that's in the general fund part of the streets, but it doesn't address any parking lots.
It, then normally the parking lots will come out of Steve's budget, the maintenance budget.
Okay, so that's in here then?
I did not see those on Steve's budget, but we'll add those. Yeah.
All right.
I, I noticed that too. Because we had them last year. We have that list of parking lots, the library, the, this one out here, the golf course, and they're all the big ones.
Now, I'd like to see with, with infrastructure and streets, if we, if we have extra money, start putting some money into infrastructure streets and see if we lease hold our own.
Okay, so he has Main Street on here and that's in two thousand and twenty-one and the budgeted amount is two point two million. Would that cover all of the Main Street that needs to occur?
Pretty close to it.
That's just the streets part, water and sewer.
As I say, is this, is this like the whole redo of the, the water and the electric and everything that has to be done?
First north to six, to seven hundred south.
It's where?
First north to seven hundred, first south, excuse me, one hundred south to seven hundred south.
That's to redo that. But that's just the street portion. It's not the water lines that have to be replaced or anything.
Right. So you already put that in the budget too, the water and the sewer? Is that in there?
Yeah, I know, in that year.
So, we've talked before about getting a whatever.
Right?
You know, lobbyist.
Lobbyist?
Yes, and I was not big on the idea. It seems like it might have been good to have a lobbyist on site. But, but part of the reason was to do some research on Main Street as to whether the state had any responsibility in, in this. I don't know if we want to revisit looking at.
We, we tried to get the state, they referred me to a guy and we played phone tag and then it just kind of went silent. So I can reach out again to him. I, I don't think they're gonna take any responsibility for
Probably not.
For the road there, but.
They, they won't, but again, going back to the, you can, we found out you can do anything if you do it the right way.
Yeah.
So, and I I do have a house guy that is, is the top guy with UDOT that I know, so I'm gonna be talking to him, so.
Yeah. That would be great, y'all.
One thing, Sarah, it might help on some of these bigger projects like Main Street, if we broke it down, we had not, so it's all separate budgets, but we had a budget that said uh, the street, the, uh, the water, the sewer, everything, so we could see one project with all the costs.
What it's gonna cost.
And have it for that.
No, I'm just trying to think, gosh, how I can do that and present it to you without them wanting to kill me. You guys heard it from him, not me. I'm just the messenger.
You can fire me if you want, so I don't care.
No, you can't get that bad easily.
Right.
But sometimes it's gotta be married to know what the real costs are gonna be to, to do that project, so.
Right, basically just have to take a, you want spreadsheet, just go through and do it.
Yeah, so whenever they meet and they say, okay, we're gonna do Main Street in this year, they just need to create a separate spreadsheet just for that project. I know that's difficult for all of these guys, but they, they can utilize me. I'm offering, I'll come in there and
God, that's an end engineering issue.
There, there is a way that you could actually reach in and grab this particular information off each of these and create a new one. When you make the change in there, you'll figure it out. I don't know if you're aware of how to do that. I can help.
Right, right. So as long as they have it classified correctly, I mean, as you go on like the water and wastewater, they may have it labeled something different. And they know that it's all that same project, but I don't.
They don't need to.
Yeah, yeah. So it's, it's a matter of me understanding how it all types in, but we'll do that. We'll work on that.
What's the asterisk button for?
Okay, any other questions on street? Oh, I was gonna mention, so on here we have the Utah Avenue project. If you go down Utah Avenue, you're here at the light and you go through, it has that, that curb that sticks out in the road. It goes from a two lane road down to a one. Do you know where I'm talking about?
Oh, right there where you hit the lights?
Yeah, right across from the Hewish. Yeah, and it juts out and it's, it's kind of a, a big hazard. I'm surprised we haven't had more out there.
Well, and people keep parking right there, literally like right when people pull in, I'm like, oh, they can't park there, but there's, there's nobody there to
Right.
To get rid of their car, you know?
So that's, that's what that Utah Avenue project is. I think if we could get that done, that would be a huge benefit.
So how are we gonna do it? Are we just gonna start from the very, that whole block?
D seven, cut.
All those houses?
Isn't it about time to widen that road?
It's gonna require removing some trees and a couple of liners and opening things back up. Right now you're forcing traffic head on. If you need any service vehicles or anything, it's, it's a real dangerous situation.
No one's on track with the, with the trailer hitch on the back of it parked on Long Ed Street is a real death trap.
Yeah, hey, all right, sorry, I'm, I just want you guys to be able to discuss so you don't come to the end of the budget say, we didn't discuss any of these. Feel like you didn't have a voice, so I know this is probably long and boring for you all, but.
I love Tracy's budget. Perfect.
Oh.
I'll approve the golf budget.
You know what happened is
We'll take approval because I do have backup right here.
Oh, you know what? I know what it is. It's the reason why I did it is because in this whole year, all they had was carts and equipment. Sorry, I deal with so many budgets. It's hard to remember. But I'm trying to take out the, the vehicles and the equipment that will be purchased through the revolving loan fund. I'm trying to take them out of the capital projects budget. We're trying to keep those separate, so that's why there's nothing in that first year, but I'm sure, like I said, it's a working, working document. Sorry, Tracy, you get nothing.
We're used to it.
But, um, so there are golf carts and equipment replacements. You'll see those on the, the revolving one, which I'm not gonna discuss tonight. That is a huge massive spreadsheet that we're trying to prioritize.
Speaking of golf courts and huge massive, massive conversations, I think two years ago, we declined an option on a, on a reception center. And we talked about continuing to kick it down the road. We're still kicking it down the road, just
Yeah, you can see, um
Topic.
I, I believe in that two thousand and twenty-two, the two million, that's what part of that is, is to make it a reception center.
We've got, we've got a private public partnership discussion we can have with you. Tracy's ready whenever you want to have that discussion.
Well, I also see it on the horizon, which I, I didn't see that before, but yeah.
I just don't want to talk about it after Kent and Ron's budget. Just timing is everything on this, you present it, you know?
That you gotta get before us.
So, um, I'm sure they'll probably bump, these will bump out the year, so the street litter replacements and pumps, fencing, I'm sure they'll probably be shipped their budget forward a year. So any questions on the golf course? You can see the big one is the, the golf clubhouse, the two million.
That one did have the parking lot in it, I'd say.
Yeah.
Well, I forgot, was it Brian that asked for the parking lot? Well, it did, yeah. We took that in our own.
Okay, uh, parks. So they have the replacing of the old tennis courts down there, three hundred thousand. Is that right? Is that the right estimate? I want to say it was more.
No, no, go ahead. No, go ahead. Yeah, it's four fifty, sorry.
Does this need to include the portion we were using for the parks tax? Because I know we discussed using some of that.
Yeah, so you can see it there.
Well, it's gonna be approved.
Yeah, it's gotta be approved. I put three hundred thousand in grand hoping that eventually we can use park tax to cover that. But like we said, there's gonna be lots of different projects that we could use for, we have connecting the trails, we have other parks, so it's
Well, we, we had a conversation today, that's why I was wondering, yeah, that number, right?
Yeah, it's four fifty.
Yeah, the, it's four fifty is the total cost, but
Right.
We're hoping to put in, we're, we're putting in for the park tax to cover some of it, but I don't know if you guys all remember the project with pickleball courts and the basketball courts replacing, piping the ditch on the west side. So basically cleaning up that whole area.
Well, that's right.
And the park tax, we get, I budgeted a hundred and eighty thousand, but we're gonna come in higher than that. It averages from fifteen to, I've had as high as nineteen. So, but they need an average of seventeen thousand, so we'll come in a little bit higher than a hundred and eighty thousand, but that's what we get per year for all the projects that I'm sure people are gonna want done.
Well, Carl and I had talked about maybe spreading that park tax out so we could show the community it's getting used in different locations.
Absolutely.
So I think that's, that's why I worry about just taking it all and putting it in one spot, but.
We don't want to do that, especially if you guys are going to Carnegie Hall or wherever you're going. Which is a great honor, which is cool. But we, we, we used to discuss tonight whether to like put in for it twice in the park tax to finish the project and then go once or just go once and then try to get it through budget. So we'd kind of lean on you guys on your opinion on that. We would like, we're gonna put in for some park tax money because I think it's a perfect project to shield the community. Look at what we passed and look at what we got, so.
And, and I, I like this project, but my, with the park tax, my first priorities, which I've always talked about is this Dry Creek Trail. That's, just so everybody knows, that's my top priority, so.
There's a lot of projects.
I think there's a lot of people that would use the trail. I've heard that over and over again.
Right.
That it's like you have a trail here and then there's somebody's property. And then, and there's no way to go through it. So I know a lot of people who go to Stanage or Provo.
Having asked that, are any of you guys on the committee?
So nobody here is on the committee?
Okay, end of discussion.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm just saying, listen up to the committee.
You gotta go make friends with me.
No, we, we ball out it, so.
They, they, they take a committee's recommendation. They take the committee's recommendation and then they vote on it. But the good thing about the park taxes, we do have it for ten years, so, I mean, if we can have maybe a ten-year plan of how we attack these different projects, I think that will be for our benefit, so if we want to have a separate, I don't know, budget session for the park tax to determine how to spread that over the ten years.
Well, I think we probably kind of maybe give some guidance to the committee and let them kind of give us some recommendations, because that's their purpose, that's what we got them, so then they can come present and maybe work sessions out.
Yeah, okay.
So, one other thing in parks and/or recreation that you probably want to discuss, but I think needs to be possibly added for a discussion with Mr. Shaw is we need a parking lot up to, for me.
And a road.
Yeah, the road, yeah.
I agree a hundred percent with that. Without the road, we don't need the parking lot.
We could provide.
So Tracy, on this budget in 2022, it says pavilion and storage at Memorial Park.
Uh huh.
Is that an additional pavilion to the one we're building this year?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's a difference, and tear down the bathhouse.
What about the bear cave?
I'm not touching the bear cage or something.
Yeah, I think that would be problematic.
You got to have one more generation first.
Show up here anymore, then we'll discuss it. Tell someone, the generation younger than birth, then we'll discuss it.
I just have to ask.
Yeah.
All you can say is no.
Bear cage stays.
Okay, I tried. Okay, any question, other questions on parks? Cemetery, so, uh, the big one on here is there is, um, a need to purchase some land to square up the cemetery. And I don't know if that's the right figure or not, does that seem about right, two hundred and forty-four thousand?
All these are, all these are a guess, I mean, we do research, but yeah, I mean, land fluctuate, everything, everything fluctuates. And, yeah, so.
So, can we use revenue from property that we've sold to pay for new property? Like, does it need to come out of cemetery, like, is there a good accounting reason or any other reason?
The, the property that we're selling now is in the RDA, and you want to keep that money as much as you can in the RDA, because I think we're, we have roads that we need to be putting in and. So, other property though, that maybe was in the general fund, absolutely, but because it's the RDA, we've got to keep it in the RDA. But, and then they also have on here their cemetery building, I haven't been out there, but I've heard it's almost as bad, maybe even worse than the bathrooms here.
It's a lot worse, a lot worse.
Okay, there you go, it's worse than the bathrooms here.
That wouldn't take much, oh.
It almost looks like somebody died over there.
The issue I have with the cemetery is that seven fifty east, I think it's kind of ironic that as a city we require everybody put in sidewalks and, and we didn't put them in. Seven fifty east, you can't walk up the, uh, east side of that road, and it's our property, there's a fence there, there's no sidewalk, I never talked to anybody as to why that happened, but I'm curious to understand if, if that's the case and that's our bad, let's go ahead and run the sidewalk up the west side of seven fifty east and make it look like it's somewhere that people want to go, it's kind of old and dilapidated right there, but if we can look at that as a street department or something, I, I would love to see that in the budget. I know that's back to the question of, well, why should we pay for somebody else's sidewalk, but, I mean, it's, it is our bad, we didn't put the sidewalk on the east side of the road when it was done.
It's Kent, where?
He ran, he saw me push my button.
Does anybody have any answers to that?
I mean, that, that wrought iron fence isn't that old, I mean, it's within the last ten years, isn't it?
I think it is. Probably only up to fifteen or twenty years.
Hasn't it? Anyway, I, I, I would maybe like to see that addressed, so that becomes an area where people can walk. Sorry, I don't know if this is the right time or place, but.
No, yes, anything like that, please.
We're not going to walk you through there anyway, so, that's the cemetery, so why would you want to have a sidewalk like that?
Well, the problem is, is you go to this, there and then all of a sudden it says no bicycles, no roller skates, no skateboards, we don't want the kids in there, but yet you've got a four-block stretch of land that's owned by the city that nobody can get past, because.
Right, our big councilman, I think you do the, you do the, uh, the residence side because it cleans up that whole side rather than, I mean.
I'm, I'm all about the residence side, I don't even care.
I'm saying on that particular road, I don't know why we would put one on the cemetery side, if we decide to do it, I would do the residence side.
Right, because it's going to cost us a fortune to pull the fence out, it's going to crowd into property we can sell for dead people, but we need, I, I think that something along there needs to happen. Nobody else buys this.
I don't know why it didn't happen, but that cemetery's been there a long time and it's probably.
It has.
The curb and gutter requirement was there.
But it would look real nice, because you think how many people go there?
I, I think.
And every time you pull out, you think, oh, this is.
No, I understand, we put the wrought iron fence to spruce it up and make it more, but I think the curb and gutter requirement was not in effect when we had that.
Right, well, I mean, and, and the curb and gutter doesn't look like it's really that old to me. I mean, I, I, that's where I delivered newspapers as a small boy and I, I mean, it was just kind of, was a chain link fence. I was on the, I was on the other side of the road.
You have many people, the cemetery takes newspapers.
At Dead Man Tells No Tells.
Okay, so any other, so anything else on cemetery that maybe we need to address? My eye is twitching, it's, twitches when I get stressed and it's like twitching like crazy, so I might have a bit of a youngish hair.
We'd make a good parrot's the left side of my face, it twitches.
Hey, uh, back when paper for the parks, um, we, we spent money to put lights on three trees, which is awesome, but it looks halfway done, I thought we were going to keep moving that forward.
Christmas, yeah, okay. So, we've talked with, with Ron, uh, it's just where power is.
Okay.
So Dave already, we've already discussed it for this next year, is, you know, this summer get power to where the other trees are, and we, we do have a couple extra lights, but it all just comes back to.
It's all power and money and.
Yeah, it's just like everything else, we can create whatever.
Tracy did sort of all those trees.
Trees look awesome. The trees look great. Trees look great, I actually wouldn't mind having the trees all year round, because people eat outside at, at. Eli's? Eli's.
I would much rather do that than take them down, put it on. I don't even care, that's a great idea.
Well, no, I think it adds to the ambiance of the community and draws people to every town Main Street, I mean, it just quite.
I did get the ones that changed colors, when you had green and red.
That'd be cool, like we could change it for St. Patrick's.
Or Halloween or whatever, and they do have, they do have.
Blue for BYU, red for the Utes, right?
Throw every other tree in those days.
Yeah, but we have to drive that, so we, we got to get power to, to where the trees are.
Just put a windmill on top of one of the buildings.
Oh, wait, that worked, darn it.
Can you use wifi?
Recreation. Hey, Carl, um, we have appropriated sixty thousand dollars for the Wilson Elementary addition, but it probably won't be good until next budget year, so that's just a carryover from this year, and that is coming out of the revolving loan, recreation, we'll pay that back, that's what that is.
The only question I have is on the, um, master plan, wasn't that budget with all the other master plans?
It should be, yes.
So we don't need that line item in here?
We can take it off, but it would roll over whenever we have to pay for it.
Yeah.
We can take it off.
All right, and then, um, the ball replacement that Woodbury should be helping us with, is that three million what we're going to have to come up with?
No, we just put the total in there, we don't, and we, again, it's a guess of where it would be.
Do you know how much they are going to pay and then how much we're going to pay? Are they going to do the whole thing or?
Right, as far as I understand, contracts are to replace the six fields, but if we have things that are above and beyond whatever level is defined, we would pay that upgrade.
I had talked, yeah, I've talked to him a little bit about it, but I think, I'm kind of in the know on that now, so that'll help.
Yeah, so I, I, I just don't want you to freak out when they come to us and say, okay, we'll cover one point eight million, you've got to cover one point two million on that, so I just don't want you to feel like you've been wise and said, nobody told you about that.
So what is, what does the contract say?
Well, the contract says that, you know, if we hadn't identified property and they wanted to move forward before we had property, that they put a number of nine hundred and it's just under a million dollars. But the part of the contract says they need to replace what's there, we, that's what we've been trying to get an answer, that's why we're trying to get it signed from them, so that we can make sure we're moving forward on the same page.
And it just went up by the other.
I've had this from Woodbury tell me to my face two or three times, Dave, we're going to take care of you, and I said, yeah, but your contract says something different, and I want to make sure that you're going to take care of us.
So we have to do it before he dies.
Yeah.
How old is he?
Oh, he's probably.
Doesn't matter how old you are. Anybody can die.
I think he's in, I think he's in ecstasy.
Oh, he's funny.
But he's had a lot of health issues recently, that's why we haven't been able to meet with him.
You can't memorialize your conversations in an email to him or a letter, a little letter of understanding?
We've written letters to him, so we've got some.
So you're on record.
The contract, the contract can be interpreted differently, that's why.
But you have a letter of understanding that you've talked to him, that's, that's the big thing.
From our perspective.
Yeah.
And we've had conversations with you, so, yeah, we, we just need, we need to finalize that with them, we actually need to start building the, the ball fields.
Okay, and then the other big one is the regional park land acquisition, Carl, what?
Yeah, just in the future, we need to start looking at land for the next large park area, Mark and I have visited about that, if it's a forty-acre park, maybe on the north side of town or towards the hospital, as we have an east side plan, and we could use impact fees to start purchasing that. And, and the reason we put it, you know, a year away, the next budget year is, the sooner the cheaper, you know, if we wait longer, it's going to cost more, so.
Okay, do you have any idea where you're thinking or?
Well, the east side plan, we have a forty-acre concept, it's not, we don't have land specific, and, uh, you know, we certainly could go on the north side of the highways, but we.
Well, I'm, I'm just.
As the community grows, we'll need another regional park.
I'm wondering about the fact that you're looking at the, the acquisition of land for the cemetery, could they not be adjacent to each other, or those facilities could be shared?
Certainly could, yeah.
Put the new building on the other side and, and kind of utilize that together? So, I, I know there's land, I don't know what the guy's asking for, it's been for sale for a long time, but I know there's land out there on that side of it. Another thing, if we're doing the master plan, that would help us. Keep going back to that master plan.
That's the same, that's the goal.
Is that master plan, are they determined who's going to be doing that?
Oh, we're going through the process now.
Okay.
Got some interview set up.
Okay, so there's your update on the master plan. Okay, um.
Yeah, Woodbury's doing the master plan. I incentivize them to sell their, to develop their property. I don't know if they do master plans, but.
But they do their property.
Might be comfortable.
We got the bids in on the master planning, general planning, that, that'd be free, I think, sent out, we're going to do some interviews, a couple of you will be involved in the interviews.
Okay, the last one is facilities, this is, um, covers most of all the stuff in this facility. You can see that there's lots of air handlers and AC units and, we have on there the main bathroom remodel, but hopefully we can.
We just did that.
Yeah.
Not hopefully, we just added money for that.
Yeah, yeah, well, I mean, done before the next budget year, it'd be nice to have that all done.
Well, we have the money for it.
Yes, yep, we've got the money. Yeah, and then the one that's on there is the new roof, um, the second story, it's.
It's going to start leaking, we don't do something, but I told Sarah, I don't, I don't care if her, her office is probably going to get.
I have an umbrella.
That's, that's where it's worth, it's on that west end, but it's, it's, um, what has its life expectancy? We did the rest of Illinois, that still was good, that we left it, this, it's the point I would got to do something, I've got parking for this stuff coming up. It's, it's, it's more out.
And he's not just doing it because I was up there, I'm sure he would have done it too if you were still up there. That was really bad.
I'm just sad that it's you that's up there, not me.
Yeah.
We could, we could use a new building, but I don't think that's in the cards.
Yeah, I don't think citizens will probably go for that right now.
I would vote for it.
You would vote for it? Okay, there we go, put it on there.
I'm only one person.
I actually think it's worth pursuing discussions along those lines, I mean, I think it's, it's time, and, and, I mean, I don't know that it's ready to happen yet, and maybe the residents won't, but, uh, combination, city building and library, or library and rec center, or, we need a new fire station, you know, I mean, I, it's, I think we need to start having this conversation, and it might be a couple of years down the road, but I think we need to start having a conversation, just personally.
Yeah, for sure, those are all needs, I was looking at Delta's fire station and they just built a brand new one and it's awesome, and I just thought, oh, Delta has a sweet fire station, and it's Delta, yeah, and I, I'm from Delta, so I can just find Delta, just, or, but, nobody's offended, but, um, yeah, it needs to be said, and even on the, the survey that we sent out, I was surprised how many people mentioned rec center, rec center, rec center, there, there was a lot of interest for rec center.
There'd be a lot of anti, but there's, but there's a lot of people that have that interest.
When it comes back to finishing that trail, how many people want that trip? I think that would bring in a lot of, you know, those people who love to do that kind of stuff, because when, when people are looking at basin, they're looking at that kind of stuff.
Right.
I've heard that over and over again, that if our trails are finished, there's people that, that want to be here, that they want to be where they can get to those.
Well, then can I be come because they could, the people could fight to work, fight for, yeah, I mean, that's the direction of young people, it seems.
Yeah.
I think this comes back to the master plan.
Yes.
Then I'll come back.
Those people could have a whole time.
Isn't this fun, things should be fun. Okay, that's all I have, um, any other things that we need to be adding onto our budgets, onto our radar? Thank you.
So this was, this was a lot.
City council cars, things like cars.
I tried to say it so it wasn't on record, I'm sorry.
Let it be known.
This is a lot of stuff we need to digest and we'll have our discussion.
Everyone I've read.
But, uh, just the last thing and then we got to move onward to the next item, but we've got, uh, some of you said, let's do these work sessions, uh, maybe on the off Wednesdays when we all have some council meetings, so, just, just look at your calendars when you're available, we can start doing that as soon as you want. We can, we can also do these when, when, when there's not a lot on the agenda, we can have meetings like this in our regular council meetings. We want to be able to discuss whatever you want to talk about, and as much as you want to talk about, so this was kind of our first attempt, if you want the next one, I mean, look at your calendar, do you want it, you know, the second week in March? I know, we, we probably could go somewhere else that we can.
Yeah, I mean.
We can have work session on those off.
We could even go up to the golf course, it's not, you know, and meet up there where it's more, uh, we can all sit around the table and discuss, so you don't feel like it's so.
Right, I don't, I don't know that this is the best, it seems like, yeah, a work session should not be in this format.
In other cities, they would do retreats, and I hate to say retreat, because then people think, oh, gosh, they're going to the Bahamas and they're spending lots of money, no, it was just going like to the golf course, utilizing other city offices and sitting around a table, having muffins or whatever, something cheap, just to make it more informal, so you feel like you can have that discussion and back and forth that you need. And we can do that Saturday mornings, I know Councilman Welton is busy on weekends, but we can make it, whatever.
Region is this weekend, state is two weeks from now, and then my Saturdays are free.
Okay, and we can do, you know, any other night, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, whatever works for you guys, we will make it work.
Do we need a, a motion to establish those meetings though?
I don't think, so I think you can just email your schedule.
They just have to be able to post it, they need to know soon enough, so it's posted for public.
So if you guys could either get with me, email me, or text me, whatever, drop me a note, whatever works for you, and let me know some dates that you feel like you could meet, and then we can, I can maybe look at everybody's schedules and try to accommodate as much, as many of you as I can.
I think one thing that we need to talk about too is truth in taxation, see what we're going to do with the property tax too.
Yes.
All these things can be on different agendas, we can focus on one topic in each work session, or we can do two or three, and we just need to kind of start moving.
And we just need to kind of start moving down that process, because it comes fast.
Yeah, it does. So like, if you feel like you want to discuss just storm drain, we can just focus on storm drain. Yeah, we can break it up as much and go into detail as much as you'd like.
I like that, because then you can have the people who are responsible. We sit down and talk to them, we talk to them for three hours. You know, we could talk to them for 10 hours, because they have that much more knowledge, but we don't all get that knowledge. So like, I agree with that. We need to do that. Yes, it is. We need to do that, where we can just sit and go back and forth with each other.
Yep.
If we do it one department at a time, and work session for each one, I don't have that much time.
Yeah.
Well, I don't think we do either. We have to have a ten to budget my money.
Yeah, I just didn't want you to feel like we're not giving you all the tools that you need. I want, I just want to make sure, you know, whatever you want, I will try to accommodate and make work for you.
I think we just shout us off an email and had a couple of ideas of some different days, and we could vote and see which way we want to go.
So do you want to keep it on Wednesday nights or?
I live on Wednesday night. I think council and staff should say, hey, these are the issues that are important to me, and we can see if there's a collection. Sometimes I don't have them right off the top of my head, but, you know, over the next week or so. Everybody think about it and then see if we can compartmentalize them.
So we came with our capital projects pretty much here. There's a lot, there's a lot of money that needs to be spent. But we didn't look at your priorities. We didn't, if we want next Wednesday, next Wednesday's the 28th. If you want to do another work session, we could take your priorities. We could start going over the operational budgets, but well, that might be a little early for that, but.
But we kind of need to get started.
You're going to 28. Well, yeah, so there's the, yeah, there's the concern, is we need to, I mean, we talked about branding for a year and a half, and we're still waiting, you know, we figured out now that we need master plans, and that's, you know, I just need to get it done sooner.
Yeah, and the operating, it does, it ties in with this a lot. And that determines, do I need to project rate increases? Do we need to have a truth in taxation? So this is where it really, this will be the biggest piece of the puzzle for me, because I've already got my operating budget ready to go to just slide in these capital projects, and then I can do my 10-year analysis and see where fees need to be. So if we could really hit these capital projects hard and determine, that would help a lot. And I'll have a 10-year analysis for you, so you can kind of see, worst-case scenario, what it's going to look like.
So I asked my question. Do you want the off Wednesdays? And then, and then on the on Wednesdays, if we have the scheduled permits, we can do, we can just do what we're doing now.
I will make it next one to add two items from my calendar.
I can do off Wednesdays. I'll just fill out my master's classes.
You'll have to do Tuesday.
Well, if you want, we can still do normal council meetings. We'll just be here longer.
Well, I, I-
And if that's better for everybody, we can do that.
We don't do next one.
We can just set it up on Wednesdays that we know. I mean, there may be one, you know, Linda can't come, or I can't come, or, but we know it's, it's set up until we get this, these things through, because it is going to be here really, really, you know, May? June's going to be here really fast.
Yeah.
It's already almost March.
I know.
Okay, we'll come up with a schedule, send it out to you.
Okay, and if you guys have projects, please email me. We can still, you know, you can discuss the budget with me, and I can compile those too, so feel free to communicate with me as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Mayor, the next, the next item on the agenda, we need to reconvene into the RDA. And then I would ask if you could go into a closed session for a few minutes to discuss some land purchase, and then we can come back into the open session, but that's what I recommend if you do that.